For joining us this evening, we're gonna go ahead and start with the roll call.
Dr. Genovasi?
Here.
Mr. Kapadia?
Here.
Dr. Liliston?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Dr. Resnick?
Here and happy to be back at Bear Tavern.
Mr. Slotman?
Here.
Dr. Stilianu?
Here.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Here.
Dr. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 7th, 2025. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of Board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record-keeping. Please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a first and second to approve the minutes for December 16th regular meeting.
Motion?
Second.
As well as January 6th.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The minutes are passed. Moving on, I'm gonna go ahead and do the... Okay, we are going to go ahead and have our student representative. Thank you.
Before, before winter break, we had our Alumni Day where over 25 recent HVCHS graduates came in to share and talk about their post-high school experiences with current seniors and juniors. We also had the National Honor Society Induction Ceremony with over 100 inductees. And last week, the Leadership Corps and Student Ambassador members helped out with Academic Planning Night for the class of 2029. And finally, many students wanted me to bring up the issue regarding Smart Passes at the high school. This January, the high school started implementing Smart Passes. There were some struggles at the start of the implementation as many teachers and students felt frustrated with the system. For example, many teachers were frustrated with the no-fly zone where students weren't allowed to use the bathroom for the first or last five minutes of class. Also, students have been frustrated with the creation of passes. If a student makes a pass, they cannot make another pass for another 40 minutes. This can cause an inconvenience for students and teachers as they have to override the passes. However, students and teachers have been adjusting to the new system as some changes have been made such as the removal of the no-fly zone. Although issues regarding Smart Pass are getting fixed, a majority of the students are opposed to Smart Pass and believe its overall negative implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Therese, would you?
Yes, and thank you for bringing the concerns of the students to us. What she was saying, if you all couldn't hear, we've instituted at the middle school and the high school a new pass system called Smart Pass. It's automated, the students go in and generate their own passes. Teachers can always override and generate a pass, like if students have taken their pass for the 40 minutes and they need another pass for whatever reason, teachers can override it. Just like with any electronic system, there's bugs, there's kinks to this, and they've already made some adjustments based on the no-fly zone comments, believing before and after class, that grace period. So we are working on it, but we are, we're excited that it's gonna be a nice way to know where our students are in the building if there's ever an emergency. In real time, you can log into the system and know exactly where every kid is or where they were on their way to, which is not something that we had the system of before. So say, God forbid, we go into lockdown for some reason, a vice principal, a principal, even the police who work with us on our systems can go in and say, there are three kids in the hallway, one's here, one's there, and one's over here. And then we know exactly who's moving in our buildings. So continue to give us your feedback because you know we care about that. I was surprised that we didn't have kids coming tonight, but I guess they put you just up to it, right? So I appreciate that, but tell them thank you because the Board is also their Board and we care about their feedback. We appreciate it.
Okay, so we are going to invite you to, of course, stay with us this evening as long as you're able. I'm going to pass on my President's Report. We have a full, full agenda this evening and I will make comments along the way as needed. So I'm gonna turn the mic over to Dr. Therese.
I do have a fuller presentation. I want to thank the folks that came here tonight for our tour, and we will be talking about our budget, talking about some of the facilities, concerns, and plans that we still have in the works. But before we do that, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that today is the International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Today, we pause to reflect on Holocaust Remembrance Day, a time to honor the memory of the 6 million Jewish men, women, and children, along with millions of others, who lost their lives during one of history's darkest chapters. As a school district, we remain committed to educating our students about the Holocaust and the vital importance of tolerance, empathy, and standing against hatred in all forms. By learning, by learning from the past, we empower our students and each other as community members to build a future rooted in compassion, justice, and respect for all peoples. We encourage our school community to take a moment today to remember the victims, honor the survivors, and reaffirm our collective commitment to never forget. I wanted to take that moment and say that. I know we have a lot of celebrations today, but today is that moment to remember, so I wanted to acknowledge that. So as we move on in our ceremony, we are gonna be doing some celebrations today. We're gonna, we started with the reception of our educators and service people of the year whom we'll honor today. We also have a surprise from our students that would like to come and give a little celebration for the Board. So our Bear Tavern students, if you'd like to come forward, and Mr. Billy, our principal of Bear Tavern.
Hello. Many of you may have, may not know this, but it is also School Board Appreciation Month. So some of our students, Mrs. Ackerman, had this creative idea. They made little planters and pots for you, and they're gonna bring them on up right now, guys. Oh, they're coming back, there's something for everybody. These were made in Mrs. Ackerman's art room, and these students spent a lot of time and they put them in the kiln and heated them up. And I want to thank Mrs. Ackerman. I also want to thank Mrs. Hammer, who is a paraprofessional in our building, because I know nothing about plants. And she, I basically said, what do we do? And she came up with this really cool idea, so thank you. And to our Board members, I want to thank you very, very much for your dedication and service to the district. As you know, it's a, sometimes a thankless job, but thank you very, very much. And students? Awesome job, students.
That is the best acknowledgement ever. I, I am just so pleased. Anybody, anybody is worried about killing their plant, just bring it over here, I've got you. I've got you. Thank you, students, thank you, Bear Tavern. We couldn't have asked for a better acknowledgement, and thank you for thinking of us.
So before we transition to our most important people to celebrate, we have one more important person to celebrate. He doesn't like to be acknowledged, but the Board is going to surprise him with a resolution, so, Board President?
Yes. So a number of you have heard, you know, a lot of talk about budget. And there is a individual who honestly humbles all of us with the knowledge that he holds in his head. And there is a particular award that for the last 13 years, this school district has been honored by through the work of Bob and his department. So the Finance Committee has a special resolution that we will read and vote on this evening.
Yeah, thanks. So, thank you. So the Finance, can you guys hear me okay? The Finance and Facility Committee had a good idea that came from Dr. Liliston, and it was around honoring, as we as a community talk about budget and everything budget, an award that this year only 31 districts out of the 600 in New Jersey received. And I think it's important to read the whole resolution in full, so we wanted to do this in honor of Bob Colavita. So the resolution reads, "Resolution Recognizing the Hopewell Valley Regional School District's Receipt of the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Fiscal Year Ended in June 30th, 2024. Whereas sound financial management is critical to ensuring the health of a school district, and whereas the Hopewell Valley Regional School District is committed to financial transparency, integrity, and excellence, and whereas the Business Office of the Hopewell Valley Regional School District, under the leadership of Robert Colavita Jr., Assistant Superintendent for Business, is responsible for the fiscal operations of the district. And whereas the Association of School Business Official International issues the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting to school districts to demonstrate excellence and transparency in financial reporting, and whereas in fiscal year 2023, only 31 of nearly 600 school districts in the state of New Jersey received the prestigious Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. Now therefore be it, resolve that the Hopewell Valley Regional School District Board of Education does hereby recognize Robert Colavita Jr. and the Hopewell Valley Regional School District Business Office for the receipt of the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the year ended June 30th, 2024." I'm gonna stop reading because there's still more here, but congratulations, we appreciate the hard work that you do, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We doing you the motion, right?
We do. Pam, please.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The motion, the resolution has passed, and again, thank you. I know we've embarrassed him a little bit, but he takes this humbly, and we are very lucky to have this fine gentleman leading our business admin department.
Not at this time. We're gonna transition to, at this point, to Ms. Smith, who's going to present our service people and Governor's Educators of the Year.
Good evening, Dr. Therese, President Williams-Galliano, members of the Board, distinguished colleagues, friends, and families. Tonight marks one of the highlights of the year for our district and the Board of Education. Each year, the Governor's Educator of the Year program recognizes outstanding teachers and educational service professionals across the state who make exceptional contributions to their students. Nominees were put forward by their peers, parents, and students. At each of our six schools, a selection committee comprising of an administrator, staff members, and a parent representative use the following specific criteria to choose this year's honoree: exceptional instructional techniques, superior ability to inspire students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn, respect and admiration of students, parents, and colleagues, and the ability to foster excellence in education as evidenced by ongoing contributions to the improvement of student achievement and the learning environment. At this time, each of our building principals will introduce their winners. From Tollgate Grammar School, Melissa Laurie.
Hello, good evening, and congratulations to all of our Educators of the Year. I am honored to announce this year's Tollgate Educator of the Year, Ms. Pam Welsch. Pam has been an educator at Tollgate Grammar School since 2002 and has taught 5th, 4th, and 2nd grade. Prior to coming to Hopewell, Ms. Welsch taught in both Florida and Ohio. In the classroom, Ms. Welsch is consistently prepared and is always looking for innovative ways to instruct all of her students. She often gives up her own time during the day to have lunch with her students as a means to strengthen their connection. Even though she is years under her belt, Ms. Welsch, Ms. Welsch reaches out to her colleagues searching for ways to enhance her craft. When she encounters students that are struggling, she fiercely advocates for them, differentiates her instruction, and works nonstop until she meets their needs. Ms. Welsch has a constant calm demeanor that rubs off on her students when they enter her classroom. Throughout the years, she has contributed to the school community by running student government and working on the Spirit Committee. She has also assisted with the school yearbook committee. Ms. Welsch's enthusiasm and dedication to her students is felt by all the families that she serves. As one parent states, "My daughter often comes home jumping out of her skin to tell me about something exciting that happened in class that day, or to share something interesting she learned. She's always eager to get to school the very next day." Another student shared, "We are a class community that loves each other because of her." Congratulations, Mrs. Welsch.
Next, we'll welcome Ms. Nicole Jean-Freddie from Stony Brook Elementary School.
Good evening, Dr. Therese, Ms. Galliano-Williams, Hopewell Valley Administration, members of the Board, and community. I'd like to take a moment to congratulate all of the recipients. It's an honor to celebrate our amazing educators tonight. It's my privilege to celebrate Mr. Doug Morrison. It's hard to believe that education wasn't his first profession because I can't think of him as anything other than a teacher. He started his career in Trenton and then began his career in Hopewell Valley right here in Bear Tavern in 2001. Two years later, Mr. Morrison transferred to Stony Brook Elementary School and has continued to be a pillar of that school for over 20 years. During his time at Stony Brook, Mr. Morrison has taught 3rd and 5th grade. Mr. Morrison is the epitome of an inclusive educator. He has the ability to connect with every child, genuinely making everyone feel welcome. He ensures that he knows words and phrases in students' native languages and continually demonstrates an unwavering commitment to creating a supportive learning environment where everyone belongs and develops this compassion in all of his students. Mr. Morrison is dedicated to the profession of teaching, holding his students to the highest standard, and supporting them to reach their full potential. His passion for teaching is apparent in how he knows and appreciates the strengths of each of his students. As one student simply stated, "He makes us better." As one nomination stated, Mr. Morrison continually encourages students to push their boundaries, supporting to meet his high expectations and celebrating their successes along the way. I can think of no better teacher to recommend for this award. His students are lucky to have such a passionate and compassionate educator as part of their journey. Mr. Morrison, you're an integral part of our community, both in and out of the classroom. I am lucky to have you be part of our school. Congratulations.
Next, we'll welcome Dr. Scott Rattell from Hopewell Elementary School.
Thank you, good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Therese. Thank you again, Mr. Billy, for having us this evening. Congratulations to all of our winners. Again, we are continuously impressed with the work that you do day in and day out, especially for our students, so thank you very much. This evening, I have the pleasure at Hopewell Elementary School to announce that our art teacher, Ms. Leah Anderson, has been named our Governor's Educator of the Year. Ms. Anderson's creativity and dedication shines certainly in every project. From organizing our Peace, Joy, Love, and Hope ornament that you may have seen in random spots throughout Hopewell Borough, to designing our school's common corner, which we now named the Lily Pad. Her unbelievable bulletin boards that I wish were in the front of our school but are in one of our great hallways alongside of, one of our side hallways showcase our students' gorgeous artwork, inspiring pride and joy in all who can see them. And we're just so proud and happy certainly that we have Ms. Anderson here in the halls of Hopewell Elementary School. One of our colleagues noted that Ms. Anderson's class is a place where imagination thrives and every child feels valued and supported in their artistic journey. She expertly adapts her lessons to accommodate diverse learning styles, ensuring that every student, regardless of their skill level, has the opportunity to succeed and flourish. And another colleague wrote, "Leah is an exceptional educator who constantly goes above and beyond, never asks for anything but just to create a warm and inviting, inspiring space for her students. She's not only skilled at teaching art, but also at just building strong relationships with her students, encouraging them to explore their creativity and develop their artistic skills." So Leah goes without saying, congratulations, thank you. And while I have the Board of Education here, I figured this was my time. I know Mr. Peters left off a resolution. I think it was, is it February 10th, Monday, February 10th? We're gonna adopt a resolution, making it Philadelphia Eagles, uh, resolution? Go Birds, sorry.
Please help me welcome homeschool advantage principal, Mr. Jay Billy.
And resident Giants fan, okay. Congratulations to all our Educators of the Year. Today, we're gonna celebrate Ms. Lee Fesmeyer as a Bear Tavern Governor's Educator of the Year. Mrs. Fesmeyer has served as a teacher for the last 27 years in various positions and is currently working as an interventionist in our school. Her passion for helping children is evident in all that she does. She's a dedicated professional with a friendly face for our students and embodies the qualities of an exceptional educator. Her students and colleagues feel her kindness, compassion, and unwavering support in all areas of the school. As an experienced and hard-working teacher, Mrs. Fesmeyer is a true guide and mentor. She is always willing to help and share her wealth of knowledge. Her expertise and literacy has been instrumental in assisting young professionals in navigating their journey in education, empowering them to grow and succeed. Beyond the classroom, Mrs. Fesmeyer is a driving force within our school community, spearheading staff initiatives, and fostering collaboration among her peers. Her commitment to excellence and ability to inspire those around her make her a cornerstone of our team. We're so fortunate to have Mrs. Fesmeyer as part of our school family, and we celebrate her remarkable contributions to education and the many lives she has touched here at Bear Tavern. Congratulations, Mrs. Fesmeyer.
From Timber Lane Middle School, Mr. Chris Turnbull.
Hello, Bear Tavern. And good evening. I want to say a very big thank you to Ms. Williams-Galliano and Dr. Therese for the leadership that brings all of this together. And tonight's such a special occasion, I want to again just offer such a heartfelt congratulations to all of our honorees tonight because what makes our district special is the uniqueness of each of the corners of our community, you know, coming together to form this amazing district, and the individual efforts that go in to make that community are so important. So congratulations and thank you for all that you do. But tonight, it's my privilege to announce this year's Timber Lane Middle School Governor's Educator of the Year, Ms. Jamie Adler. Let's give her some love on that one. Ms. Adler is an 8th grade English teacher who has served the Hopewell Valley Regional School District with tireless dedication, ceaseless empathy, and irrepressible joy for over 20 years. As a master of her craft in the area of English and language arts, Ms. Adler has been, has the uncanny ability to connect with students and inspire even the most reluctant learners. She makes sure that everyone fits in, in her class, and that all of her students feel seen. Middle school, I don't know if you heard, but it's a tumultuous time for many children. But Ms. Adler goes out of her way to understand, to connect with, and to inspire every one of her students, regardless of their ability, their attitude, or their outlook. She advocates for her students and encourages them to shine, often calling their successes her proud mama bear moments. But Ms. Adler can be seen in almost every facet of the school's operation. She advises the student council, she's a leader on our DEI committee, she facilitates our Saturday Promise Program, and so much more. Not only is Ms. Adler always willing to jump in and lend a hand, but she does it with an authentic positivity and a caring attitude that one cannot help but notice and be inspired by. Her empathy and her genuine love for her students and our school is palpable. Ms. Adler was nominated by students, by parents, and by colleagues, which is a testament to the wide range of her impact on our school community. She's incredibly dependable, creative, resilient, and flexible. There is simply not a problem or a challenge that she does not meet head-on and solve, regardless of how much work or energy it takes. She's relentless in her support of the students of Timber Lane Middle School. One former student stated, "Ms. Adler is the single most impactful teacher I had during my time in the Hopewell Valley School District. She is one of a kind and is sort of a keystone in Timber Lane's infrastructure. Now as an adult myself, I still appreciate all the wisdom Ms. Adler has offered me over the years, and I don't know that I'll be able to find someone who relates so well and so easily with all of her students anytime soon. I honestly aspire to be the sort of mentor that Ms. Adler was for me at such a pivotal time in my life." And a parent of one of our former students said, "Throughout 8th grade, I watched my child blossom into a confident and articulate young woman. I credit this transformation and growth to the nurturing environment created by Ms. Adler." One of her colleagues said, "I cannot think of another person in the building who regularly hears from so many former students, some of whom take time out of their busy schedules to visit her. Her deep understanding of middle school student paired with her hilarious personality and expertise in the content that she teaches make her an incredible candidate for this honor." And I think what makes Ms. Adler more impressive is not what she does each day, but how she does it. She's got this unparalleled ability to be positive, to be flexible, and observant. She's the first to jump in and willing to do whatever I need and the school needs. She checks on others and makes a proactive impact every single day. Ms. Adler's the epitome of community, of a community builder at Timber Lane, and it's an honor to celebrate her as the 2024, 25 Governor's Educator of the Year. We are all grateful to work with her every day, and she is incredibly worthy of this incredible honor. Thank you.
And last but not least, Trish Riley from Central High School.
Good evening, and thank you so much for having me here to celebrate these amazing educators. I feel incredibly fortunate to work in such an amazing district with such remarkable people. Tonight, I am lucky enough to introduce Jamie Toronto as the HVCHS Educator of the Year. Jamie has been a teacher in the Wellness Department at HVCHS for the past 24 years. During that time, she has not only taught multiple levels of traditional wellness classes, but she has also impacted hundreds of students through her work with the Teen Pep Program, the Adaptive Wellness Class, the STEP Program, and the Leadership Corps Program. Ms. Toronto was well-respected both by her colleagues, who describe her as a constant beacon of energy... who describe her as a constant beacon of energy, enthusiasm, and professionalism, and also by her students. Ms. Toronto maintains high standards for her students and encourages them to prioritize well-being both in and out of the classroom. As one student says, "She pushes you to be the best version of yourself." The impact that Ms. Toronto has had upon the students of HVCHS is immeasurable, and we are proud to recognize her as HVCHS's Governor's Educator of the Year.
This evening, we are also proud to recognize three outstanding support staff professionals from Hopewell Valley for their hard work and dedication to our district. Eligible candidates included power professionals, secretaries, custodians, maintenance staff, bus drivers, van attendants, campus safety officers, and members of our Technology Department. A selection committee, including myself and the Directors of Facilities, Pupil Services, and Transportation, carefully reviewed nominations and selected the recipients based on the following criteria: dedication to their job, they are inspiring, and they make a difference in the lives of staff, parents, and students. I know Ms. Riley was so excited to be here, she didn't even sit down, so we're going to bring her back to the podium for the high school winner.
Thank you for allowing me to join you again. I am very excited to introduce Teri Montagna as an Educational Support Professional of the Year. Ms. Montagna has been a power professional in Hopewell Valley Regional School District since 2007. She has supported dozens of our special education students since that time, most recently as a job coach in our Work-Based Learning Program. And she is known throughout the school, throughout the district, and now throughout the community for her patience, her kindness, and her humor. Ms. Montagna's impact is not only limited to the special education students that she supports each day. She also has a positive impact on her colleagues and on the school as a whole through her involvement in the HVEPSA, the Garden Club, and the HVCHS Faculty Council. We are so appreciative of Ms. Montagna's hard work and unfailing dedication to the students of HVCHS, and we're very excited to celebrate her as the HVCHS Governor's Educational Support Professional of the Year.
Well, welcome back, Ms. Nicole Jean Freddie from Stony Brook Elementary School.
Thank you again. I am so pleased to announce Ms. Carrie Rell as our very deserving winner of Educational Support Professional of the Year here at Stony Brook. Ms. Rell joined Stony Brook in 2014 and has been an integral part of our school community ever since. And while she has worked in a variety of classrooms and settings, she has spent most of her time in kindergarten. She has left a positive impact on the many students she's worked with. As one nomination stated, "The children adore her, and that is because of her compassionate and sincerely caring nature. She is insightful and intuitive and always senses when something is going on with a student, so we can explore their feelings and support them. She always has the best interest of our students at heart." Outside of the classroom, Ms. Rell is always ready to help out at Stony Brook. She is involved in our bus duty, she is always greeting our students with a smile, and she is a supportive member of high school athletics, often helping with many of their games. I did talk to some of our students to share why they think Ms. Rell is so special, and one student shared that it is her smile every day I walk in the door that makes the difference. Another shared, "She helps me with my boots." And the last one just stated, "Yay, Ms. Rell, I love her." And I think that sums it up. So we are lucky to have her here in our community, so congratulations, Carrie.
And from our Transportation Office, Ms. Talia Owens, Director of Transportation, will present our last winner of the evening.
Good evening, all. As you know, I'm the new kid on the block, so this is a first-timer. So this is about Ms. Denise Ewing, who is a very valued bus driver in our Transportation Department. She goes above and beyond for all of her students, her coworkers. You know, she comes in a little earlier and she starts everyone buses, especially those big buses, to make sure we have them nice and warm for the children. She's been a driver for over 40 years, with us for three. Not her first time in Hopewell. She was a driver in Hopewell when she was working for Rick Bus Company as well. So she's very familiar with the area, very familiar with the students. As the student that nominated her stated, you know, every morning, it's good morning, good night, because she knows it's an integral part of their day, you know, to make sure they're going to school happy, you know. They're the first sight outside of the parents, so she does go above and beyond. So I just want to say congratulations to all recipients, and congratulations to Ms. Denise, well-deserved.
Congratulations to all of our honorees this evening. Thank you for being here, thank you for all of our guests and family who came out to support them, and thank you for all you do for our district. We are a better place because of all of you. Have a great evening. Can we ask everybody who was acknowledged for a quick picture out in the hallway?
We'll be back in just a quick moment. This is a nice time for a bathroom break. Bathrooms are right outside the door, I think, right?
We got used to very quickly. But it was, we were already saying. No, not after living, not after having it. I had 1.2 acres, I was like, oop, I did blast land. How little can you have in Pennington? I think we have the smallest block you could possibly have in Pennington for a person. Yeah. I was like, if we're moving into town, I want a little bit of this.
You gotta do the school. School recognition. Ah, you can. I don't know if you said it was gonna read or not.
Oh, no, thank you.
Yeah, they can.
Word is lecture, five people, you know? All the people. Public, all my people.
How many people sign in?
And we're back. Thank you all for your patience. Okay, we are going to accept the resolution for the school board recognition as a month. And there is a very long resolution, even longer than Mr. Calavita's. So we're going to, it's attached to all of your electronic agendas, and we're going to vote to pass it. So I need a first and second to accept the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The resolution is passed. Moving on in the agenda to the presentation for Mr. Calavita on the budget audit, or the annual audit.
Okay, I will be brief. As part of the audit program that we have, it is the requirement of every Board of Education to receive a report about their annual audit and any findings that were found. So we will go through that right now. This report was reviewed in greater detail with the Full Finance Committee last Monday. So just to let you know that the audit process is not a simple process. We begin in June, prior to year-end, with about two weeks of auditors in our offices looking and doing payroll testing, accounts payable, checking our internal controls. They go, they leave for a while, they do some fieldwork. They come back typically October, November period, where they spend a good, solid month. I know it's a month because people complain that they've taken over the conference room. So they are here for about a month of actual fieldwork. They go through purchase orders, they speak with each of the departments, they'll talk to Dr. Treese, they'll talk to folks in HR, they'll talk to almost everybody in my office, separate from me. That's how they detect fraud, if there was any. But there's a very complex process that goes through a lot of detailed questioning, a lot of documents that have to go back and forth, a lot of questions that are asked. So it is a very thorough process. They also provide ongoing support. If there's something that we want to implement in the district and we want to know how that can be done within the parameters of state law, we have those folks there to guide us through any tricky accounting that we might need to do. Grants, for example, if we get a large grant from an outside source, they help us protect that money for that purpose. Okay? There are four kinds of audit opinions that you can get. An unmodified opinion, that's the best one you can get. It doesn't sound glamorous, but that is the best one. A modified opinion is if the auditor has to make changes to your books. You don't want that. An adverse opinion means you've done a lot of things wrong. And believe it or not, there are districts in New Jersey that do get a disclaimer of opinion, which means the auditor can't make a decision on what your books look like because they are that bad. There are districts that get that. We did receive an unmodified opinion, I'm happy to say, which means that our district is preventing all of our financial statements the way they're supposed to be presented. A lot of what boards like to hear is, "What is our financial status at the end of the year?" This is a very misleading number sometimes. It gets published in various newspaper articles. We do not have $15 million sitting around in a savings account waiting to be spent. Of that $15 million, $1.4 million of it was purchase orders, or requests to purchase, that went unfulfilled at the end of last year. So we have $1.4 million of goods, services, et cetera, that had not been finally fulfilled. It could have been partially fulfilled, it could have been on back order, any number of different things were unexpended. So that money has already been spent, it's just not liquidated yet. Of the $15 million, $3.9 million was left over from the year before and was moved into this budget. So that $3.9 million has been spent. It's already been spent. The maintenance reserve is real. That is money that can be used for maintenance projects. That means things that are used to keep systems up and running on a daily basis, not for capital projects. It cannot be used for capital projects. It's ongoing routine maintenance. And it's there in case we have a problem during the year where we may run out of money. It could be used to replace a well pump, because we've been talking about that recently. But that's money that's set aside for that purpose. Capital reserve money is money that's set aside for major capital projects, and it must be authorized by both Department of Education and the Board of Education. It can't be just utilized by me if we run short on something or I want to use it for, you know, a pet project that we come up with. The entire Board must approve it, as well as it must be approved by the Department of Education. The $2.5 million of allowable surplus, The two point five million dollars of allowable surplus, we are allowed by law to keep two percent of our audited expenditures in reserve for an emergency. That truly is money that if something were to happen, um, we needed to hire ten teachers, we needed, s- something happened, we could pull that money. However, it does need board approval and it must be approved by the Commissioner of Education. So the money cannot be just used because we as a board decide, there is a rigorous process that must be gone through, we must petition the Commissioner, there's a lot of backup documentation that must go forward, and they cannot deny the request if they feel that there's money in district, um, to cover the expenses that we want to use it for. Okay? We are in good financial stead, um, with our, with our fund balances. We'll be talking more about why we aren't using the capital reserve as we get into our rec- referendum talk later on, but this is a positive, uh, for us. We did have one minor audit recommendation in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, um, during the testing of our student activity accounts. Um, these are funds that are run by the schools themselves, uh, usually it's dollar in, dollar out. If, uh, Mrs. Jones is collecting money for a field trip, she collects the money, turns it into the office, they take that money that's collected and they go to pay for the field trip to the Philadelphia Zoo or wherever they're going. Um, the high school has a lot of student activity accounts related to clubs and athletics. Again, dollar in, dollar out. The issue that we had on this one was, um, when they were dispersing money, there was a required form that wasn't there. It's our, part of our internal control procedure that every time there's a disbursement, there's an approval that goes through several different levels at the, at the level of the school. This particular form was missing. Um, I, this com- it's not a, a substantive comment in nature, um, but unfortunately with student activity accounts, they're very, uh, strict with those because they involve a lot of cash. So we, this did not affect us, we do have to do a corrective action plan. I'll be meeting with all of the folks who manage student activity accounts, um, to just review procedures regarding that. Just some final comments I want to make, I do appreciate the board, um, resolution earlier. Um, I also, they acknowledged me, I need to acknowledge all the folks that helped us get that report. Now, I mentioned the, the other folks and the other offices within my building, we all work together to make sure that purchasing is being done correctly, that we're following all the rules that are implemented by the state. And believe it or not, the audit encompasses more than just my office, there's a lot that goes through, uh, transportation with the D R T R S report, um, the A S A report, which is done by the Technology Department and Curriculum Office. Um, a lot of purchasing is obviously done by the Curriculum Office and we work closely with them on grants management, so all these folks, um, have to do it. And lastly, the, the folks in the Human Resources Office, there's a lot that goes on between, uh, both of our offices related to hiring and staffing, um, a lot of reports that go back and forth between the two. Without all of our staff members being focused on these items, um, our audits wouldn't be as clean as they are. We do have a lot of accountability, there's a purchasing training we do each year to make sure all the folks are trained, um, in how to properly purchase through the New Jersey, uh, Department of Education. It also helps us with our state guidelines, the audit is a huge factor in our N J Q S A report, and we will be going through Q S A next year, so it's nice that we have a nice clean audit, uh, as we enter that process. Again, County Superintendent also has oversight. So again, we're pleased with the results, um, and very thankful for the staff that we have here in district, um, helping us get there. Any questions from the board, uh, before I ask you to accept the audit and the corrective action plan?
Yeah, I was thinking about whether I should ask, but, and decided I will, this is just. Having now been here for three years, I've noticed that sometimes we say things and, um, some of the folks don't fully hear what's being said, so I'm just gonna ask you. So the fifteen million, we don't have that.
No.
Okay. And, and then the other question I was gonna ask you for perspective, when that well pump broke in Timberlake and we had to replace it, how much did that cost, just one well pump? Roughly?
Tom, how much did it cost?
I think it was roughly twelve thousand dollars for the motor.
For the motor.
Yeah, but the whole, the actual work, the labor.
All, all was close to thirty thousand.
So it was thirty thousand, he said.
Just one pump. How much did the chiller cost at, uh, Hopewell Elementary?
Was that one point?
The chiller boiler project was one point eight.
Okay.
One point eight.
So these things can run, you know, that capital reserve, two chillers and we're in trouble. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Do you need a roll call?
Motion to accept the audit.
Need a first and second to accept the audit?
First. Second.
All is in favor.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The audit is accepted.
Thank you. We will go.
Moving on to referendum?
Yep. I lost. Where's the slideshow? All right.
So we want to begin by, um, recognizing and welcoming our, um, architects here, they're here today to help us, and they're gonna talk specifically about the work that we have, uh, been talking to the board about. They have not decided if they're going to go to referendum or, or not, we are still heavily in discussion about that. And part of that has been us talking with our architect about the, the projects that were on the original referendum and, um, what has become emergent problems since then. Before I get into that, I am gonna take some time to go through, uh, or you're gonna start with the architect first and then we'll go through the, our budget?
Yeah.
So after we talk about, um, the proposals for the facilities and maintenance repairs that, that would be encompassed in a referendum if we decide to go that route again, as, as if the board allows us to do that, which I highly recommend that that's the way to go. Um, we'll talk about the budget, which is a separate part of, um, concerns that the district has. Yeah, no, we can start with the architect, we don't want to keep him all night, so let's start with that. And then there'll be opportunities for questions after the, um, presentation and comments. Up to, yes.
Mr. George.
Am I on?
You gotta get real close.
Good evening. I'm George Doocy with F V H D Architects, sitting to my left is Tom Quinn, who's the, uh, Director of Facilities for Hopewell Valley Regional School District. Thanks again for having me here tonight, here to give you an update of where we are, uh, since, uh, unfortunately the referendum was defeated, uh, to, to tell you about some of the work that we've been doing and some of the things that we would like to just show to you, to see the direction we'd like to head in and where the projects are now and, and things that have changed since that time. So just please bear with me, some of this information you may have seen before, I'll just tell you what the agenda is going to be for tonight, where we are right now, our proposed projects, two questions, and again, none of this has been decided right now, this is just a proposal at this time, everything you're going to hear tonight are just, you know, where we, kind of where we are now, and of course, there's more work to do to get to the point of consensus and, uh, being ready to move forward again on a second referendum.
So again, George, before you, you go on further, uh, after the, we had, uh, the board debrief, a finance facilities debrief and a board debrief on, you know, just what we wanted to do to move forward, what the finance committee charged Dr. Treese and I with, as well as George and Tom, was to go back to the projects and re-evaluate them based upon need. Okay, what is a number one need, a number two need, a number three need? At, after, um, George, Tom and I and Rosetta had gone through and examined that, we presented to the board a week ago, um, and, which has put us where we are right now, having redone it, um, some things were pulled out, some things were pushed in, um, and this is gonna kind of give you, the board, the rest of the board and the public, a, a chance to understand where we are, um, I'm sure they'll be talking about where we, the decisions that were made, uh, at a later point, but George, go ahead, back to George.
So we're gonna talk about summary of those projects, uh, the overall costs, what we would expect in terms of eligibility for state support and moving forward and next steps that have to be taken. So, just the key points, uh, there's consideration to be given now to a November of twenty twenty-five, uh, referendum, that will be during the general election, it will not be a special election, so that will be the opportunity to have the referendum when the other elections are held. So that is the proposal, since the last refer- was defeated, referendum was defeated, the Board of Education, Facilities, Tom, Administration have gotten together and have, uh, listened to feedback from the community, and we want to show you tonight the results of that effort. The last referendum, as you all remember, was in two thousand and fifteen, which was almost ten years ago. So, what's different this time? Well, there were some additional eligible infrastructure projects that were somewhat costly, that were added into the new proposal for the referendum, those projects that were added in are eligible for state support, okay? So the state will pay, uh, for the, their portion of one hundred percent of the cost of that project, which is around a third of the cost, and we're gonna talk more about that, all right? Cost escalation, unfortunately, we did have to account for some additional escalation from last September to November, not on every single project, but certain projects, we definitely did have to add that. We took the synthetic turf fields, uh, over at A F T, out of the referendum proposal, we also removed the toilet room concession building that was proposed for the high school. Two questions are now proposed, question number one, all critical infrastructure projects, ninety-nine percent of those projects are eligible for state support, okay? Question number one must pass before question number two can pass. We're gonna tell you what question number two is about, it is about the space for students at Bear Tavern and Tollgate Elementary School. And I know with the Bear Tavern project, our questions about the pilot money, I'm going to, uh, turn that over to Dr. Treese to speak more about it.
You want me to talk about it now?
Sure.
So in, in terms of the, um, the pilot, I know that that's gonna be a question that's going to come up. We have been in, in discussions with the mayors, we met with them just a, a week ago, um, Mayor Kennedy's here today, the other two mayors couldn't make it, they give their regards, um, but they, we had a, a promise, again, from Hopewell Township, that said that they have committed to paying for Bear Tavern's addition. Um, if the, the mayors can sort out, um, some of the negotiation, um, struggles that they're having, they left that meeting with that promise that they're going to pay for that addition, and, um, if they can come to the agreement, they're working with the lawyers now, hopefully that we can have that answer soon, and that would mean, that would come off, that question would come off the referendum. So we're excited about the progress we've made, and again, they hold to their commitment that they are willing to pay for that addition. So they're working through that with the lawyers.
Okay, so we'll talk about the proposed projects and the project categories. First of all, uh, these are the critical needs projects, these are not fluff projects, you've heard these projects before in previous referendum, the building integrity projects, the roof warranties, the roof areas that, uh, have expiring roof warranties, but also roofs that need to be, need to be replaced, and these were the roofs, again, that were not done in the last referendum. Uh, so, this will also provide an opportunity for future solar to be installed on the rooftops of the schools, indoor environmental improvements, and I know we've spoken a lot about those previously, but many of these cannot be deferred any longer, uh, for reasons I think you've heard Mr. Quinn speak of, parts are impossible to get now, uh, the technologies are so far advanced that the systems have become obsolete. Safety and security, obviously a big project, security, uh, exterior doors, interior doors, replacement of the electrical service at Tollgate Elementary School, that must be done. We're also going to build space for students and some, uh, renovations as well, primarily at Tollgate and Bear Tavern Elementary School. There will also be some site improvements, but again, these are critical projects, various paving projects, drainage corrections, and also some entrance enhancements such as at, uh, Tollgate Elementary, sorry, Timberlake Middle School. So next. So question number one, again, it is the critical infrastructure projects, ninety-nine percent of these projects are eligible for state support, and again, the state will pay about a third of the cost of the project. Now, uh, the minimum the state is supposed to pay is forty percent, but they don't ever pay the full forty percent, our financial advisors tell us that about thirty-three percent is the right number to use, so that's the number we're showing you this evening, and that's what the tax schedules are gonna be based on that you're going to see. Affected systems at the end of their useful life require excessive maintenance and repairs, obsolete, poor operating condition, et cetera. Again, question one must pass for question number two to pass. So, again, thirty-three percent of the projects eligible for, uh, the projects that are eligible paid for by the state, all right? Now, I wanted to say, uh, the cost to replace the systems we're talking about in a referendum, as I think we've said before, very expensive projects, very hard to do, you, you heard, uh, speaking earlier about the amount of money that the district has in reserves, a large project like the ones that are in the referendum, that would be very, very difficult for the district to afford and would be a financial burden, right? And of course, if you fix that project under an emergency, you get no state support for that. State support only comes to the district in the form of a referendum, so. Potential disruptions to school operations, right? Could happen. So, question number two. These are the expansion and renovation projects, you can see those at, uh, Tollgate Elementary School and at Bear Tavern Elementary as well. We talked about what will happen if these spaces are not constructed, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, but we are looking at larger class sizes, potential redistricting, reduction in space available for specials, okay? Um, and finding places to put services for the kids, the districts now, and not just Hopewell Valley, most school districts have increased the level of services to their kids, right? And we need space for that. Schools, when they were originally designed, didn't contemplate all the services that would be provided to children as we do today, and the need to continue to use the modular buildings. So, next, please. So we talked about capital project planning and execution earlier, the district continues to expend funds. This referendum is dealing with a lot of stuff, but there's still a lot of things that happen almost every day in the district, every week in the district, that funds have to be expended for, because it can't wait. So there are costs that have to be covered in the budget, part of the, the funds that we discussed earlier, and emergency and emergent repairs caused by age, wear and tear, some of the items are original to the buildings when they were constructed, and the very expensive projects simply can't be covered, as we discussed earlier. These are just some examples, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but these are just some of the examples on that left side there, those are projects that the district was able to accomplish with their capital reserve funds over the course of the past several years, some of those projects, I know a couple of the projects, we were able to get some support from the state in the form of rod grants on those, which was useful, that was one other mechanism that is available, very limited opportunities. There are other projects that are just simply repair and emergency type projects on the right-hand side, uh, and even now, Timberlake Elementary School, right, sanitary line, that was the last one we had to deal with, right? Uh, so, the district still continues to deal with these types of projects on a regular basis.
So if I could just pause here, oh, you're probably gonna say the same thing I'm gonna say, Bob, um, but if we can just pause here, I know that, that question comes up a lot, why don't we use the capital reserve, or why don't, doesn't the district save up for these ongoing projects? We do save up for these ongoing projects and that's what's here, right? Us trying to get ahead and plan for projects. I know that the turf field at the high school that already exists, that we went to repair and replace, we repaired over the years, there was money saved for that, and there was also money that we saved to replace that turf field. So I know that that was a point of contention for folks, but once you put these things in, they have to be maintained. There's a schedule for things like our turf field, for our tennis courts that are rubber based that have to be replaced every, every so often and repaired along the way, for our roofs, for our, um, our rubber based track, all of these things that once we put them in for our students, need to be maintained over time when we plan for them. What we can't plan for is the emergencies, right? So that's why you have to keep a capital reserve, because these emergencies sometimes can get into millions of dollars. And if there is an opportunity for a rod grant or something where the state will actually give some matching, we have to have the money upfront to pay for that project, we can apply for the grant, we may get the money back, we never get all of it, that they promised us, but we can, we do do that, and if we don't have anything in reserve, we can't avail ourselves of those opportunities. ourselves of those opportunities.
So, yeah, and that's a, that's a great point. I just wanted to point out that we did, we are doing this coming summer, a rod grant project that would be funded 40% by the state, a major boiler project at Central High School. We're replacing original boilers in one of, in one of the, it's actually the majority of the heat that comes through the, the original parts of those buildings, but we are getting 40% back from the state. Project was pulled from the referendum because we were concerned that if it did fail, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to get those replaced this summer. So we do use our capital reserve, especially when we can get contribution from the state. Using our capital reserve without a rod grant or, or contribution from the state means we're paying the entire cost of this, and we'll get more into that later on.
And Bob, again, I'm going to be anal, but discovering sometimes things need to be repeated. If we didn't have the full amount in the capital reserve to pay for those boilers, would we be able to take advantage of the rod grant? If we only had the 60%, would we be able to do the project?
We'd have to do it smaller.
Right, we wouldn't be able to do it because the state won't give us 40% until afterwards. We'd have to, we have to have the full 100% upfront.
Yeah, you have to prove to them before they issue the rod grant that you have the local share.
And the same goes for what we're asking for, for the referendum.
Right.
Right? If we do approve the referendum, we have to ask for the full amount, right? And then we, what the state gives us back will reduce the tax burden, but what's going to be on the paper is the full amount.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I think that the, thank you, Alex, for trying to just add some detail and layers under this. I think what was floated out in the general population through the newspapers rather than going to the school board website was a, unfortunately, a casual reference to the $15 million, and really miscommunicated to the community what was available to the, to the school district to use. The other thing, as you listen to Mr. Calavita, you see the complexities and the rules around each and every one of those line items within that $15 million. Some of it's already spent, some of it can only be utilized as a capital expense, it all needs reapproval. And again, I've said this a number of times, but given the audience, I'll say it again, there were implications to behavior that was slanderous, in my opinion, and inappropriate, and it unfortunately helped sink the referendum. People had misinformation. So the complexity of managing the budget and what's available for the, the number of changes in our schools, for buildings that are over 100 years old, it's a lot. And I think Bob and Tom Quinn and his department, they do a Herculean job managing this work. We get a lot of relief for using our own folks to do a lot of this work. So just, I really need to underscore, as we talk about the possibility of referendum and the possibility of just big projects coming our way, that we trust you as parents and community members, that you're getting to the, the website of the district for the right information. And if you have questions about what is on the website, please ask. The information floated in public is inaccurate and quite honestly, was not in good spirit. And it, it really disappoints me because it left this group of people here feeling like they had to defend themselves for really, really, all the wrong reasons. And we're here for your kids, and we give your time, our time, because we're committed to that. So I'm going to turn that back over to you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go through the schools one by one, just to give you kind of an overview of the projects and the costs. So here's the Central High School, where many of you know much work was done in the last referendum. There's about a little more than $9.5 million proposed there. That's the remainder of those roof areas I was speaking about earlier that were not touched in the last referendum because they didn't need to be done at that time. The 400 wing, which is a science wing HVAC system, needs to be replaced, and paving in the solar parking lot and a few other select areas of the high school. And that really is the limit of the work that's proposed this time. Moving on to...
Right, and again, George, the, the roof area is to the, to the lower right. Folks still refer to that gym, I like to laugh about this, but they refer to it as the new gym, and that new gym is probably 25 years old now. So that's why that roof needs to, needs to be replaced.
And again, these are not the roofs that were in the other referendum that happened almost 10 years ago. We, when a referendum passed, there are strict, strict guidelines that, and that's why the language was so complicated in that voter question that you all looked at. They're very specific about saying what the project is in detail, and we, as a district, cannot spend that money on anything but that project, and we have to do the project that we set. Otherwise, Mr. Calavita and I go to jail, and I'm too much of a diva to go to jail, all right? We're not doing that, all right? So if we say we're going to do a project, we have to do that project. These are roofs that were not done in the original referendum. It's rare that a school would do, a school district would do a whole roof on a school. It's just too massive of a project. It usually is done in cycles, and then we keep record of what, what those roof cycles are and try to take them out as best we can.
Thank you. So Timberlane Middle School, about $20.5 million. Again, same story with the roofs, areas that were not done in previous referendum, at the end of their useful life now. A variety of indoor environmental improvements, HVAC projects in the primary classroom, in the, in the classroom pods, C and D, B and C, the main classroom areas of Timberlane, they're going to be done. The aux gym will have air conditioning, HVAC equipment replaced, that is the original equipment to the building, very obsolete. And also replacement of the chiller, yes, it's actually time to replace the chillers, they're more than 10 years old right now. So aux gym renovations will also be made. We're going to try and make that space a little bit nicer, replace the gym floor and some other work in there, and make the improvements to the front entrance, which I think we've spoken about before. You've all seen the front entrance to Timberlane Middle School. We just want to, we want to enhance that, improve accessibility, take care of some of the deteriorated conditions. Moving on to the next, oh, go ahead.
I wanted to speak real quick on the HVAC work in the B and C wing at Timberlane. Any of you that have children at Timberlane probably were aware that we had several failures over the last week when it was really cold. We had coils breaking in the unit vents that left three rooms without heat. So this is an ongoing issue that we're trying to correct.
Bear Tavern Elementary School, again, roofing, deteriorated exterior doors that need to be replaced, and you're going to see that also, I think, at Hopewell Elementary School. The breezeway area, which is where the staff come into the building, also will be, will be addressed. Classroom doors in the classroom pods A through D will have security glazing and some security enhancements made to those functional, and functional enhancements. Cafeteria renovations, adding some single occupant toilet rooms, things like that are going to be addressed in the Bear Tavern project, along with systems that you don't really see much, but it's a sewer pumping station. That needs to be updated, that needs to be replaced. It's obviously a critical system, connects to the force main, that pumps down to, down to Ewing, actually, is where it's connected. That, that needs to be replaced as well, and obviously, we need that system to be reliable. And the staff entrance walkway cover. So that's again about $10.2 million at Bear Tavern. Again, eligible projects. Moving on to the next, Hopewell. Hopewell, about 10 point, just over $10 million, almost 10.1. Again, the same with the roofing, a theme here, HVAC. And again, these are the critical HVAC projects and equipment that are problematic, very hard to repair, and in some cases, parts, right, Tom, aren't even available anymore, and the equipment really can't be repaired. DOAS, which is dedicated outside air system ventilation work will be done, which is also contributes to comfort, humidity control, and energy efficiency as well, by the way, and that's a theme in all of the projects. And a primary wing HVAC equipment will also be upgraded as well. Again, interior classroom doors, and we're going to add two ADA compliant toilet rooms to the kindergarten classrooms at Hopewell, okay? Next, Stony Brook, again, roofing. The flat roofs at, at Stony Brook will be addressed, along with some masonry wall conditions that are causing leaks right now at Stony Brook. We're going to address those as well. Deteriorated exterior doors. Cafeteria, the rooftop units, again, Stony Brook's 25 years old. Those units are beyond useful life, are giving us issues as well. We're going to put a chiller in because the geothermal system there, after the amount of time the geothermal has been there, starts to lose its efficiency. So we're trying to plan ahead by putting a cooling tower in, as we're seeing that system's efficiency start to drop a little bit every year. And a drainage issue also at the rear of the school will be addressed at Stony Brook. There, about $3.35 million, okay? Tollgate Elementary School, again, roofing, replacement of select deteriorated exterior doors, HVAC, DOAS, again, HVAC on the third floor of the building, safety and security, electrical switchgear. It's a very, very important project for Tollgate that needs to be attended to, and also some driveway improvements, additional parking, and pavement restoration will be done at Tollgate Elementary. For about five point, almost 5.5 million. Now, question number two, these are the, these are the space projects, the projects where we're constructing space for the kids, right? So Bear Tavern Elementary School, I think we've seen these slides before, area where proposed addition will be built. The modular buildings will be, will be, will be renovated and improved so district staff can move in there for, for kind of the administrative portion and support portion of the district. And a TED classroom addition proposed at Bear Tavern. This is the project that if we're so fortunate that we do get pilot money, that's $16.1 million right there for the cost of the addition at Bear Tavern, okay? There'll be small group instruction rooms, toilet rooms, and so on and so forth. Here you can see, again, this is Tollgate addition at the back of the building. We're going to remove the modulators, expand the parking lot, just go back to the site plan, please. Expand, remove where the modular buildings are, that's that red rectangle at the bottom. We're going to increase the number of parking spaces by using that area for parking, and we're going to make that driveway wider, get rid of that congestion and the trouble, trouble with turning there. And then we're going to construct a addition in the back. And also, of course, we're going to bump out and replace the hard surface play, and I think basketball might be back there, that might be Bear Tavern. But anyway, we're going to replace the, hmm? Oh, it's at Tollgate, okay, right. So that's part of that project as well, and create a courtyard. So there's the, what it looks like blown up. Again, bathrooms, six pre-K classrooms, self-contained, 950 square feet, including an ADA accessible toilet. And that project's about eight, almost $8.9 million, $8.869 million, okay? And, and there will be some renovations at Tollgate as well. We're going to relocate and renovate the nurses' suite. It is woefully undersized now. We're going to, we're going to actually move it to the area that's marked as number one on the plan. The old nurses' suite, we're going to make into a small group instruction room, and then we're going to make some enhancements in the gym area, including adding a place for the gym instructor and a toilet room over there, too, for everybody to use, since there's no facilities in that area. So that project is about $623,000. So here's the overall, here's the overall summary. You can see question number one and question number two, all of the values listed for each of the schools. You can see that question number one, those critical infrastructure projects that are 99% eligible for state support, it's 59,208,000. And then there's question number two, projects at Bear Tavern, new construction, that's at $16.1 million. And then for Tollgate, the nine, almost $9.5 million. You can see your totals there, $84,833,000. Those numbers may change a little bit as the state paperwork is submitted, but that's, that's about where we're going to be, okay? So here, just seeing the breakdown, again, those total costs at the top, and here you see the eligible costs for each and percentages for each of the projects. For those of you who may not have heard it before, new construction in New Jersey is based upon a formula that's based on what we call unhoused students. Unhoused students are determined by the state of New Jersey. It's not based on, well, what we think it should be or a number that it feels like it should be. It's based on the area of the buildings divided by an area allowance compared to the number of students that you have in the district, okay? So you have very, very few unhoused students in Hopewell Valley, and so therefore, very little of your new construction is actually eligible for state support, okay? And we know that because we have to do that exercise when we make our submissions in the district's long-range facility plan, which also has to be updated as part of this process, okay? So there you can see expected state share, expected local share, overall numbers. So you'll see overall about 23.6% of both questions supported by the state in the aggregate, okay? Moving on. And then these are the tax impacts. These were provided to us by the district's financial advisor, by the way. You can see question number one, each of the communities, Hopewell Township, Hopewell Borough, Pennington Borough. This is the average annual tax impact based on an average assessed value home, which appears there on the top of the chart, and you can see the impact. Hopewell Township, 284, Borough, 248, Pennington Borough, 294, and then for question two, same thing, 184, 160, and 191. And then the combined questions, and there they are for Hopewell Township, Hopewell Borough, and Pennington Borough. That includes the $16.1 million at Bear Tavern, which drops off if the pilot money comes through.
Right, so if we did lose, if we did get a contribution from Hopewell Township to cover the cost of the Bear Tavern admission, you'd see about $105 on average drop in that total if we didn't have to pay for the Bear Tavern addition.
Right, okay. So just moving forward and next steps, just a couple of slides here. So what happens if the referendum doesn't pass? Well, and probably I'm not the one to speak the best about this, and Dr. Trace probably, and board members may have something to say about this, but impact on students and instructional programs, larger class sizes, more redistricting, reduced services, which I think we discussed before, failures of critical building systems, which are going to be extremely costly to repair, and the money that you saw that the district had, its capital reserve and main reserve will go away, okay? Just because of the amount of money you're talking about for these, these types of systems. Hey, construction costs are going to continue to rise. I don't think we're going to ever see construction costs come down ever again, at least not my lifetime. So I think that's something we have to be realistic about. We've already seen some impact just, just moving to November, if, if we move to November, okay? So next steps, really, working back from that November 4th date, we do have to make the notifications to the county clerk of elections for a general election. It's 75 days, the clerk has to be notified ahead of the election date, and so we do have to get some paperwork into the state and make some decisions about submitting those projects in April, and then a decision about moving forward with the actual referendum have to be done sometime in July by the Board of Education, so that notification could be made to the clerk of elections.
So it's, it's a key thing that George is talking about there. It's not, the dates are set. If we do want to go to a November 4th election, that would be covered, it would be a free election for the district. We heard aloud and clear that folks were not happy that we had a special election. But the backdating of the projects, it's 75 days back from November 4th that we must notify the clerk that we're going to do an election. Then it's, what is it, is it 90 days?
90 for the...
90 days for us to get projects reviewed by the Department of Education.
Yeah.
You have to backdate again. So if we want to proceed with a November 4th election, we are on somewhat of a time crunch that we would need to get the go-ahead, George, to give George the go-ahead to start to submit. He doesn't have to submit everything, but he will have to submit some things because projects were broken apart, and there's some new items that need to be submitted. But we do need to act relatively quickly if we are going to make a date that's seemingly almost a year away.
So your, your only opportunity to have an election that won't cost the district to have scheduled a special election is in November. The other referendum dates, and there are four other dates that, and it's mandated by, by law, the dates when school referendums can be held, and those other four dates are special elections, which have to be specially scheduled for you, and therefore, there is a cost associated with those, like there would have been in September with that referendum. So November's your only opportunity... So November's your only opportunity to have a referendum that will not cost the district any extra money.
So at this point, we, we open it up for board discussion, if the finance committee wants to comment on the meeting, or, you know, any, any board member has things that they want to ask or comment on.
Thank you.
I'll defer to, you can hear me, right? I'll defer to the finance committee, this is the first time hearing and seeing any of this, so this is just my initial reaction, it occurs to me that the pilot issue should be the very first thing, and what's the timing of that? And how will that impact all the work that you all need to do? Because that, that needs to get decided, I feel like, before, you know, we kind of talk about whatever's in the question too, because that's going to have a direct impact. And is that, is there enough time for that to happen, you know, for us to be able to, you know, fix whatever it is we need to fix in order to, to get us to November?
So again, in our meeting with the, the mayors, they were committed to try and negotiate an opportunity for Hopewell to keep their promise in, to covering the cost of the new addition, but there were some other things that they had to work out and the lawyers are talking. We let them know the timeline that we're on, but if we don't hear from them, probably within the month, we're going to have to move forward with this. This proposal is without us having that pilot money in place, there is an opportunity for them to do it in other ways and give us the money back after the fact that we'll also relieve the tax impact. In that scenario, we have to bond out the whole thing, and then they would just pay back for that portion after the fact. So that's, it's not, right?
So one of the other things that we, that can happen is we start the process of getting the projects approved, if by the time July comes and they give us money, we don't put it on the, we don't put it on the ballot, but the project's approved and we can move ahead.
Right. But we're hoping to do it well before July.
Right. What we're doing right now is we're getting, we're submitting projects to the DOE for their approval. They, as, as I talked earlier, everything must be approved by the, by the Department of Education prior to us being able to do anything. So the projects would be going down there for their approval. If we, you know, if, if money comes available to us in some way, whether it's a pilot or anything else, is another major donation from a community member, we don't put the entire amount of money on the bond question. We have some more time to determine that.
So, the way I think about it is, there's, the best possible outcome is we know where we are by our next board meeting. But if we don't, we're going to have to work harder to explain to folks why we're bonding the full amount, but there is plenty of time for the municipalities to figure things out and hopefully come up with the money to cover the Bear Tavern addition. I mean, pretty much up until the point where we actually start issuing bonds to pay for it, right? So, so there, you know, there's kind of, there's the best possible thing and the next thing, I'm hopeful that things will get figured out really fast. I can only hope, that's all I can do.
Mr. Peters, did you want to share anything, or you good?
Oh, go ahead. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I have a little soliloquy, if there are no questions. So, so here's my take on it, because I said, as we were talking to folks about the last referendum, that it's a, my view was we were putting the question in front of the community and kind of asking them what kind of district they wanted to have. Going into this discussion, Dr. Teresa has done a significant amount of convincing to have set my mind to a place where, well, there was so much disinformation that folks didn't necessarily understand the full impact of what they were, they were voting for. And so I'm inclined, I mean, and we do need to have a referendum to maintain the kind of district that we have. So I'm inclined to support it in the next meeting in the form, if it's roughly in the form that we're seeing it right now. But I will say this on record, if the voters in this district want to have a school district where kids learn from home and not in school on a regular basis, and we've just had folks in Princeton where they had to close the high school. If they want to have class sizes that are significantly higher than they're now, with kids sometimes holding umbrellas over their heads, because Drew failed and there's, if that's the district that the voters want to have, if that's how this gets voted, if we do go to referendum the, the second time, still probably going to be on the board next year, and I will not be voting for a third referendum for us to do this again, right? We've had one round where there was a lot of, hopefully that was, my hope is that was just misinformation and people weren't paying attention to what the board was saying. And I got hit for not providing a sense of urgency because I said the district will go on. Well, it will, it has no choice, we have to have a district. What people didn't listen to, and I want to stress it, it will be a very different district. There will likely be quite a lot of closed schools and learning from home and much bigger classes. And if, but if that's the decision that the voters of this district make, I'm not going to head, bang my head into the wall for the third time and do it again next year. That's my little soliloquy on the subject matter.
Sort of on, on, on top of what Dr. Resnick just talked about, is there any plan, planning going on right now, you know, on contingency on what we will do if it doesn't pass? I mean, is that anything, anything being thought of?
Well, we do every day, we, we keep working at it, we put Band-Aids, we try to fix what we can, we go run to the most emergent problem. As I was going around to the PTOs and talking to the parents, some parents were, well, the air condition hasn't been working and that's, isn't that an emergency? Well, it hasn't been working at Hopewell Elementary. Well, we just had three classrooms steamed at Timberlane. And as a former principal of Timberlane years ago, I remember having eight classrooms steamed. I remember having cells break and flood, flood hallways. There, the chronic problems in buildings this size when schools aren't properly funded, and we'll talk about that in a minute when we transition to budget. It gets to the point where you're chasing these projects and trying to maintain the programs that you all have come to this district for. And none of us, no districts in the state of New Jersey are able to do it anymore with the 2% cap and with, with the partial funding that we're getting. We're all going to referendums. Some of you in this, just in this community are receiving Princeton's flyers. Robbinsville has gone to referendum a couple of times, West Windsor Plainsboro will be going to referendum. Lawrence is, is also going to referendum. They're facing the same challenges we are, and folks are starting websites complaining about it. They're upset, they, they have their own campaigns going. I get why people voted no. Taxes are high in the state of New Jersey, it's frustrating, I get that. But I also get that if we're going to maintain this, that is the only mechanism that school districts have been left to do this work. So I know that some board members may say no if there's a third time, I'm going to keep saying this is the only mechanism you have until I leave, because it's going, this is going to continue to be a problem. I don't have any magic fix for this. I, I don't want to call you and say that I have to close a school because there's smoke or something coming from an HVAC system like, like Princeton High School just had to face. I don't want to have to close a building because it flooded or it has asbestos in it and mold or something like that, like other districts have had to face. This is what we're up against, and I don't, there is no other mechanism that schools can avail themselves of right now.
But are, are we doing any kind of pre-planning? In other words, are we, any, thinking about a preparation for the lack of this money? Or you're just saying we're going to, going to sort of?
The answer is, they do, they do the work every day to do as much as they can and prioritize regularly. Tom sits in on finance committee meetings every month, he's, probably lives in Bob's office. It is an ongoing problem, so Plan B is to continue to do the hard work that the district admin and Tom's staff does. I mean, it's, it's tackling them one at a time, and there's...
Can I, sorry, can I just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
No, Mike, I, I appreciate your question, and I think, you know, I appreciate your detailed presentation so much, George, and I think sometimes we lose the forest for the trees, so I just wanted to reiterate a couple points. So we asked Bob and his team to come back with literally the critical infrastructure projects that are going to fail. This is infrastructure that's failing, this is water leaking through the roof of the library, right? These are like bricks falling down into the pathway on the kids, like this is stuff that we actually don't have a choice if we're going to fix it or not. We don't have a choice. I've been sitting through these meetings for, what, a year and a half now? We have to fix this. So the question of like, the planning or where's this money going to come from? To be totally blunt, my understanding is it's going to come from cutting program and cutting staff, because those are the only other options we have. And so I just, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just want to be really, really clear, because I think sometimes we speak about this, you know, in euphemisms, but that's literally where we are right now.
Yeah. And, in reference to what you just said, I, what I'm asking is really, what kind of educational processes are we going to change in order to, we'll have to fix these stuff, we can't let the wall, you know, the walls fall in and the water fall into the door, the floors. But have we thought about and possibly, you know, communicated, what kinds of educational things will be impacted and how are we going to maintain as much of an educational process as we can?
Well, we won't be, and when we transition to the next slide deck right now, we're just talking about the referendum, there still is maintaining our budget, our regular operating budget that's for the course of the school year. Most of our budget, 82% of that are our teaching staff. So what's going to happen is, even with a referendum, we are all facing the real reality that we have to cut programs. That's, that's also something that school districts are facing. Referendum and you have to cut programs because we can't fund it anymore. It's the same thing you're facing in your own households when you go to the grocery store and things keep climbing, eggs are $6 and $8 and all of that. We're not immune from that either, we're not getting any more money from the state, probably facing a reduction of the funds that we get from them, and things are costing more and more and more and more, and it's outpacing what the district can bring in and, and generate in terms of revenue. So yes, we are, well, we'll talk specifically about that in our next slide deck, so thank you, Dr. Wilson.
I, I just want to add in, I, I really, I, I don't want to fear monger, but I do really agree and want to reiterate with what Alex is saying. You know, we as a board, when we were reorganizing classes this year in September, there was, what, one kindergarten class that had 24, 25 students in it, and we got inundated with emails from parents about how those were too big of class sizes for our students. And if, if that's the expectation we have, which I think we all agree on this board, we, we love the fact that Hopewell has such small class sizes and is able to accommodate the individual and unique needs of our students, we have to pay for that and we have to pay for it looking forward. And, and when you look at the next slides, the next slide deck that Bob's going to present, the items on there that we are looking to find, to cut, to, to be able to fund our, not only our operating budget, but to potentially be proactive in saving, are the things that directly affect our students' learning. And as a former student, those programs, you know, charging money for athletics, whether that be cutting some of the AP curriculum, those are the things that really touch all of our students. And so I think we have to be cognizant as we're looking forward and, and as we potentially bring this to, to another vote in the referendum.
So, sorry, can I just say one more thing? Drew just made me think of something else. When I'm sort of watering the earth here at Hopewell, coaching soccer, doing whatever I do, there's like two things I think I hear the most. The first is, school start time, but that's neither here nor there, to give everyone a chuckle. The, the second is classroom space here at Bear Tavern. So I guess my, my question would be, I, I understand when we're looking at the question one, is there, is there, it's more of a process question, is there room to sort of move those around? Because I do, it seems like, from what you said, we're looking at, question one is basically based on, you know, whether or not we're going to get state support for it, right? And question two is, is the, but that might not necessarily be, you know, kind of where the community's at with some of these things. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to sort of move the questions around, you know, based on, on feedback.
So I'm going to be frank, I didn't want any separation of the questions, because to me, having parents vote yes and then one school or two schools not getting what I feel like they need, which is not having kids outside the building is not okay. But I also know that some of the campaign, campaigning that was against the referendum initially, and this is from me listening to you all on a, on a listening tour, folks set out to specifically fail the referendum because they were not pleased with the, the pilot and the additions and all of that. So we decided we were not going to let critical projects that were going to close our schools be affected by that this time. We would split the questions out so folks could decide, is that something they really think is important? But these projects, we, we just have to have, we just have to have. And we know that those are also projects that are not going to be funded by the matching with the, with the up to 33% really, that the state could offer us.
Yeah. But the other, the second question, the two bills, right? That's the class sizes, and I keep going, there was the, the, the town hall that the administration held before the last referendum. I, I have this image of a member of a public standing up and saying that when she went to school here, there were 40 kids in the class and she was perfectly fine with that. So I'm not going to tell, I, I don't know what those numbers are going to be, but that's the mental picture that I have, right? If we don't have space and if we don't have money to pay for teachers, then the class sizes will go up. I mean, there is no other way.
I, I also, sorry, I want to add one last point. As someone who works in the state and, and knowing where the political willpower is for the next few years, there is a push to redo the school funding formula in New Jersey, and we have lucked out in the last few years with the amount of funding we got. I think we had, we had an increase actually last year. And many of the districts that we look at as peer districts, you know, South Brunswick, Hillsborough, a bit bigger, but, but maybe not in our immediate vicinity in Mercer County, a lot of those districts received substantial cuts in their aid, like upwards of millions of dollars. And, I mean, some legislators came through and got some of that money, money back, others, you know, they had to deal with the cuts and work around it. So we've gotten incredibly lucky, and the fact that the formula will likely change in the coming years, and because Hopewell is an affluent area, we're likely not going to benefit from that funding formula change, we, we have to really consider the things that, that we're talking about, and, and that is where the state is moving, whether we like it or not.
I guess I'll chime in and make a comment or two, but I'll take a different angle. So when I joined the board two and a half years ago, I remember coming in saying I have three kids that are going to be in elementary school, and I had one sole purpose in mind, which was try to figure out the budget. And I remember sitting down with Bob Colavito at that time in Rosetta, and in the first 30 minutes, I said to myself, oh my goodness, everybody is in the same situation we are, and nothing is going to change anytime soon. And this isn't because of any decisions that have been made or not made by the administration here, it has much more to do with what's going on in Trenton right now. I think many people in the community realize that when we look at shared services holistically in Hopewell Valley, schools aren't the only issue. Emergency services, fire department is another major issue right now that we're trying to deal with, and they are equally at an impasse. Why? Because money has to come from somewhere. When you have Trenton give guidance downstream to school districts that say that referendums are a means to pay your bills when you need to do things, guess what happens? Referendums get passed and referendums have to be used. This is a much bigger issue that we, as residents of New Jersey, need to think about on a grander scale at the Trenton level to figure out how we can actually afford to continue to fund our schools and things that we all love and care about in Hopewell Valley. At the end of the day, whether we like it or not, I don't think there's anybody in this room that says, I like to pay taxes, right? I don't think I've ever met somebody that ever said that. But we do it for a reason, and we do it for the things that we're supposed to get out of it. And part of what we get out of that is having a good school system, which leads to second and third order of effects of home values and all of these other things. I have been explicit in sharing my thoughts over the past year to the, very vocally, to be very candid, in the community about the fact that this is a broader issue where we need to have mayors involved. I commend the administration for being able to get the mayors into a room to have a question and frankly, hold some of them accountable for what they have said over the past five, six, seven, eight years. The reality is, is we have multiple lawsuits between the three towns in our community right now, which is prohibiting their, these two, right up here, to be able to make a deal. That's the reality. And until that gets done, we're unable to be able to figure out from those mayors where they're going to help, specifically Hopewell Township. So I would encourage anybody listening to this online, anybody that's sitting in this room, to show up at those meetings and ask them what's going room, to show up at those meetings and ask them what's going on. You've heard it here, we have thirty days before we can really start figuring out what the next steps are. They made a promise to Dr. Therese and Bob Colavita, we should hold them accountable to that. That's what they're there for, that's what elected officials are for. I would hope that as we continue to move through this process, and as we see from the budget conversation we're gonna have, that it's not gonna look any prettier, right? This is the reality of what we're in right now, but we're not alone. There are so many districts that are feeling this, and Bob will talk about this, I'm sure, his business administrator official friends from around the state that have had to cut fifty, sixty, seventy, a hundred teachers. If you look at the news of what's going on in Tom's River, their board wanted to shut down a high school. This is very real problems that we're facing right now, but we're not alone. So, I would encourage all of us to get vocal and get active when we're asking these questions. But at the end of the day, the way that I see it, and I'll be very candid, we're hostage right now. We want to be able to move forward and do stuff, but we need to hear from the other towns' officials, so we can get to that step.
I think that we have kind of covered the bases, and also given you some real shade and color about the budget. So, we don't take any of this lightly. These are all of the things that have been needed into the conversations over the last, probably the last year, honestly. But, we are a community that believes in education, and we're gonna figure it out together, and we depend on Dr. Therese and her administration to do that work and provide us with the information, so we can make the decisions that we know you are going to support. With that said, I'll also move us into the budget discussion, and understand that while there is a, a link to these two things, they are very, they are still very different discussions, and the mechanisms for managing the budget, they're gonna, will use some of the same terms, right? So, I just wanted to, I know, I look over at Bob's screen. So, so I just wanted to point that out as we roll into the budget, that you'll hear some of the same levers and things that are gonna be pulled in order to balance the budget and moves forward, but it is separate from the needs of the referendum, because the items in the referendum are based on building facilities and infrastructure. I will say, I, I need to underscore this point. One of the items that was raised in the last referendum, as part of the misinformation, is that there is some mismanagement of the facilities budget, and the reality is, that is most certainly not the case, but it has been a common practice over the last decade or more to not go to cap. And the reason that we didn't go to cap evidently, was because we wanted to present the community with no tax increase, or no tax, in, tax impact, or a tax relief. The problem is, is that, that if you don't go to two percent cap, and your expenses are going to increase by four percent, you're already two percent in the hole. So, all the times that we didn't go to cap, meant we were digging ourselves in a deeper hole. And where did we steal the money from? Our facilities and maintenance budget. So, Tom has had the same budget for how many years?
A long time.
Ten years. Anybody have the same budget from ten years ago? Here's the problem. So, when the information out there floating is that there was mismanagement, the management was not in going to cap to at least get us less in a hole. So, now, we're here telling you, this is, this is the best time to dig yourselves out of a hole, us to dig ourselves out of the hole together, using the ref, referendum as a mechanism. So, I just need to clear that point up. So, we'll close that discussion around referendum, you'll obviously hear more discussions in the future, but we'll turn it over to Dr. Ther-
Right before we do that, I just want to say, we have a month for you guys to ask questions. Tom, and I, Rosetta are here. If you, if board members have questions that you want to get, you know, you want to have a meeting, you want to discuss it prior to the next meeting, we'll proceed with getting the documents that we need approved on, on, in February, if the board, just to have it ready. If you have questions before then, please let us know, so that we can, we can bring you up to speed, if you need to be up to speed, have any other questions that are unanswered.
Yeah. And, and there was a question from John that, we also have that month to change the structure. And, and to, and to entertain comments and opinions, and think about what the right-
We'll revisit again in finance facilities, in a few weeks when we meet, but, you know, we need to, if we're gonna make it to a free election in November, we need, we need to act sooner than later. If you're not ready, you're not ready, we understand that. Our recommendation is to try to, to, to get out there sooner than later, especially with a free election.
Because my commitment is still to start building, if we do get a yes, as soon as possible, and then get some of these critical projects started as soon as we can. And that's gonna take a long process as well, to, to go out to bid and to find vendors and all of that, and, and folks to do the work for us. So, that's gonna also take some time.
We transition to a budget discussion.
Okay. So, again, our budget, what drives our budget is our mission statement, this is what you all said that we want to do for our kids. We always keep that in our, in the forefront of our mind when we're making our decisions. Bob talked to you a little bit about the bub, budget calendar. We started back in September talking about budget. Every year, we start early in the year, talking about where we spend our money. In September, curriculum and instruction, Dr. Plitz has shared some of the things that she was facing, with making sure that she's meeting the state guidelines around writing curriculum, to be sure that we align to the core curriculum standards that the state has identified. Much of that, she has cut now, because we're very concerned about making our budget this year. What does that mean? We'll probably be writing some budget, uh, some curriculum ourself. We've postponed those things that we can, but there's still gonna be some obligations that we have to, if we're gonna meet our state audit, that will be probably coming next fall. In October, we talked about our special education budget, educating our, some of our most fragile students. That is, is something that we're very proud of. Ms. Donardo shared the great work that she's doing, making sure that our kids are in the least restricting, restrictive environment, which is here in Hopewell. She's brought a lot of great programs back to our school district, because we found in the past that we do a better job education, educating our kids in terms of academics, and when kids need social emotional support or emotional regulation, they were missing that when we were sending them out. So, those students that we can keep in-house, we've built programs for. We've added preschool in all of our sites, which we didn't have before, and she just continues to do work that really attract people to our district, amazing work, so we thank her for her presentation. In December, we had a general budget discussion to talk about how the district is funded, and we'll talk, and we'll give you some highlights of that today, tonight. And then in February, the February, through, through February, we're gonna continue to have these talks. Tonight is one of those nights where we talk about, you had a tour of Bear Tavern. Next board meeting, we'll tour Tollgate, and we'll rotate around the schools. I'll offer other tours to support our referendum discussion, but we'll still be talking about our regular operating budget, which is apart from the referendum, because we are facing some pretty rough times this year. That will happen through February. We'll have a work session in February where the board will decide what they're doing moving forward, and then we have to strike a budget by March. This is-
We are meeting, we've met with two schools so far.
Yes.
We'll be meeting with the remaining four schools, three elementary schools, and the middle school, I know, the high school, on their specific budgets. They present, they've looked at their original budgets, we're looking at and asking for some fine tuning. We're also, you know, working with maintenance and facilities again, transportation, to see where any, any, you know, cuts can be made as well. So, we are, we are looking very granularly down at our budgets and seeing what savings we can find.
And so, this is what I've charged them to do. We've given them a number that we need them to cut, and we're asking them to look at the school-based level, because I don't want to cut from up above and impact kids in a way where they may know another way to tighten their belt, right? My job is, I know I have to cut. What's the least impact I can do to our children moving forward, knowing that next year might be worse than this year and the year after? I, and we're just gonna go ahead and transition to the next slides. So, our priorities, again, is to maintain as best we can the programs that exist in the services as much as possible. What I'm gonna say this, is this about passports. Their decision to go to the two percent cap or not, was their decision at the time, as volunteers, they made the best decision that they felt was appropriate at the time. Maybe they thought that things would change, and that promise that, that Mr. Kapadia talked about, with the state reassessing how they funded the schools was gonna change. Because we have been looking at this fiscal cliff as educators and leaders for over a decade, and we've been fighting and complaining, there's some superintendents nodding in the audience, and going to the state, and petitioning, and talking to our, we've even invited elected officials into our, in our roundtables. We are going to hearings and saying that we can't continue to maintain this. We have hoped that this would get better, and it's not. So, know that we continue to do that work, but we are at the point now where I can no longer just say, oh, well, we'll just cut from Mr. Quinn's budget and keep moving. There's no more cutting to be done, right? Now, we're gonna have to cut into some programs, and that's, that's very unfortunate. So, we're gonna be talking about that. We have to meet our contractual salary and benefit obligations. With this, we do enjoy a, a very small class size here. I know we see it creeping up, especially here in Bear Tavern, in some class sections. And we've been trying to balance through Tollgate and Stony Brook to keep those down. We are not gonna be able to keep class size down to where they are now, on an average of sixteen and seventeen in a class. That's really what we're talking about. And a kindergarten class of twenty-four, by the time somebody leaves and goes, gets all the extra help and all the things that they're getting, there might, there really may be only fourteen kids in a class. We can't maintain that anymore with the budget that we have, especially since we're in negotiations with the teachers' union right now, and that we're anticipating that they would get a raise, well-deserved raise, for their cost of living. And then we also have the raising cost of health benefits, so we'll talk about that in a bit. So, here we go. So, Bob, you want to tap on this one real quick?
Sure.
And I'll just jump in?
So, I kind of, I wanted to break down the budget into two pieces, obviously, the two pieces of any budget, revenues and expenses. Mr. Kapadia brought up the fact that the funding from the state has not been, it's been in very volatile the last several years. We have benefited for the last seven years, we've gotten a slight increase. I'm not talking major dollars, a few hundred thousand a year over the last seven years. We are at the highest levels of state funding since I've been here, okay? But, as we'll see later, it's like six percent of our total budget. Okay, we'll get more into that later. I mentioned the two percent levy cap. Everything that we do is going up greater than two percent. All of, all salaries district-wide are somewhere in the general area of three and a half percent increased. Health benefits are double-digit, being double-digit increased. The state average health benefit waiver for next year is fourteen percent. We're not in the state, thank God. State aid, we've been advised to, to accept less, to expect less this year. We had a meeting with the county superintendent last week, told him that would be devastating to our district, to receive less. To receive flat is a problem for us.
Yes.
We are, we do have some locally generated revenue, we, we do receive some tuitions, both special ed and regular ed. Students come here and pay their way to come here. Our buildings are used pretty much twenty-four, seven, twenty-four, they're seven days a week, especially our high school. We are looking into charging athletic and co-curricular fees, bringing them back after a ten-year hiatus, and increasing our transportation fees to help balance our budget. These are services that are what's considered in excess of a thorough and efficient education. That's what the state uses, T and E, thorough and efficient. These are above that. Those who are using them are, are, we're needing to charge for them. And again, the use of surplus. This year's budget, as I mentioned during the audit presentation, has three-point-nine million dollars worth of money we took from last year and moved it to this year. It's not sustainable. We're spending more of our budget than we ever have before, because everything costs more. So, I am looking, and, and I get the evil eye from, a lot of times from my colleagues, that I am trying to take every bit, they give me money, and I go, I, that's all, I need more, I need more to put aside. Everything costs more. Expenditures, we just talked a little bit about that, everything is subject to inflation. We want to do more in curriculum instruction, we want to keep our programs up to date, we want to keep the curriculum in compliance with state standards. It costs money to do that. The state doesn't look at, that they said, well, you should do this now. Then we have to write curriculum, we have to implement the program. Transportation, mandated service for the majority of what it is, but every year, and it's been going up. Last year was a five-point-eight percent increase. This is state mandated increases. This isn't just the contractor coming in and saying, is, we're gonna charge you more, it's mandated. They can go up to five-point-eight percent, the year before that, it was five-point-seven. This year, it dropped, it's only three-point-six percent, but going up greater than two percent. Insurance, both property and casualty insurance, which is exceeding eight, nine percent, and we're in a pool with, with three-hundred-and-fifty other school districts, we joint purchase insurance, it's going up ten percent, not two percent, ten percent. Health benefits, the governor in two thousand eleven, I believe it was, implemented the chapter forty-four that was supposed to provide tax relief. It hasn't provided tax relief. Our health benefits continue to rise in excess of ten percent. And we're doing better than a lot of folks, we're self-insured. We only pay, we only pay the cost of delivering the coverage. We don't pay premiums, so if we save money, we get to keep it. Okay? Special education costs, we've talked about that, we want to bring our kids back in here. Our facility and maintenance budget is flat, it hasn't gone up, but the costs have gone up. Staffing is, is within, our salaries, again, seventy-nine percent of our budget is staffing, all staffing and benefits, seventy-nine percent of our budget. We're people, we, we hire people. Technology, as you all know, everything today has technology attached to it, from, from fire alarms to wireless devices, everything has an addressable piece to it that has to run through our system, our bandwidth, due to state testing requirements, is not what it needs to be. So, we have to do technology infrastructures because of this, you know, influence of tech, of technology, which is also, on the flip side, also increasing our electric rates, because AI, if you've read about it, takes a lot more electricity, a lot more chips to make it run. So, you know, it seems like a great thing, it's adding to the cost of our budget. And lastly, and not least, the anticipated growth in Hopewell Valley. We see it here, I think, here at, at Bear Tavern alone, it's twenty-nine students since September have come here, okay? It's not, and, and they're just starting, they're just starting-
And there's unanticipated things that come with that, and we love, we love that we're having this growth, but you can't predict if students will need special placements or what they'll need, and they come with those special placements, we're gonna honor those. We couldn't anticipate that the way that the development was laid out would be a problem for transportation. So, we had to add additional bus routes, just because we couldn't navigate the space in the way that we thought we'd be able to, to navigate it. Will these things equal out at some point? Yes. But what that's going to mean, is that at some point, the district is gonna have to think about redistricting, because I'm not gonna add three buses that we can't afford if it just means this street or this section's gonna have to go to another school. It's something that Hopewell has never had to face. As a Council Rock mom in Newtown, we face it all the time. They send us a letter saying, your kid went here, they went there. I'm not trying to do this to you. I'm gonna try to make that work with people that are coming in and they're new, we do that already with Tollgate, when it maxes out sometimes. Folks move in, and we say, well, you're going to Stony Brook. We'll try to work with parents as best we can to make sure that it doesn't affect you if you've been in, in, in a space for a while. But, I don't know how much of that I'll be able to control for as it, as we continue to grow. So, these are the things that will definitely be impacted this year. Class size will increase, I'm just gonna tell you that now. I'm not gonna be able to split a section because it hit twenty-four, so it can go back down to fifteen or sixteen, we can't afford that anymore. So, that class sizes will come up, and yes, you can take a picture, this is also gonna be posted. We are going to eliminate courtesy busing unless folks can fully pay for what it costs for the seat, because we cannot afford to continue to do that, with, if we're gonna maintain all the, some of the other things I'd like to. Further reduction of supplies, we've already been reducing and pulling in, that's how Bob saves some of the money he saves, he shuts off supplies and things like that, the amount of copies that teachers were able to make. While that's, that's something we don't want to have to do, which, again, we're trying to figure out how, least to impact the programs that we offer. Phasing out world language, a world language probably this year, based on the number of students that are subscribing to that world language, is probably gonna happen, and we're looking at those, those enrollments now. Elimination of auto shop, we always like to, to be proud of our comprehensive high school. This is one that's gonna happen naturally, because I don't know that I can replace my auto shop teacher, he's retiring. The, we used to get funding from the local trade school, who used to pay his salary, part of his salary, we shared that, we took the salary on, they took, they helped us support the cost of, of keeping the shop up, up, in terms of maintenance, with them dropping off and saying they're not gonna do that anymore, and me not being able to find a teacher to replace. And I even went and tapped my son's auto shop teacher, who's in retirement, to come out, and he said no. So, I tried. That's probably, that's gonna be eliminated this year. Um, that's probably, that's going to be eliminated this year. The district-funded field trips will be reined, either eliminated or reduced. Reinstating the athletic fee for extracurricular. Um, years ago, there was an athletic fee for the high school and the middle school. I am doing this to keep from cutting middle school sports, which a lot of schools, districts have done. So we're going to hold on to them, but we're going to have to, there is going to be some charge of athletic fees, which we're trying to determine. There will be opportunities for those with financial need with that, um, that, that has always been in place when we've had charging for trips and things like this. So those mechanisms will be in place for those who, who can't afford it. Um, restructuring our K-12 exploratories offerings. I'm not going to cancel any, but we have to look at what we're doing, and we may have to, we may not have, be able to offer as much as we used to. But I want to keep all those offerings in place, like your steam facilitators, the music offerings, uh, the, the AP and all the things that we offer. We're going to have to do some restructuring with that. Um, what I can say is we are not going to be running courses at the high school that are, you know, the middle school doesn't usually have courses that are this small, but we will be phasing them out as well. If there's 12 kids or below in that course, it's not going to run. We can't afford to do that anymore. And then also eliminating and consolidating some of our administrative positions. Um, we're going to be looking at just overall, even though as far as administrators go, we're just kind of in the middle as a school district. But we're looking at all the positions down at central offices and things like that to see what consolidation can we do, um, in those areas. Transportation, you want to talk about this one, Bob?
Yeah, just, again, just going through some of the, the major cost drivers and, and things we're experiencing. We talked about the, the increase, um, of the renewals of our, our routine routes. We, we can, uh, continue to struggle with driver and attendant shortages. Right now, we're down five drivers. Um, we were fully, we were fully, uh, covered with drivers at the beginning of the year, but volatility in drivers continues due to places like Amazon, who are paying our drivers, you know, a lot more money to go and drive for them. A lot of them are going to drive, uh, trucks for companies. So to keep folks, um, employed is very hard right now. Fuel, um, and parts cost volatility is, is there. We are very fortunate to partner with Hopewell Township, and we do get our fuel much cheaper than the average consumer. But again, we have a, a wide range where our buses go. Our buses run, uh, anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour, and they burn, you know, eight gallons a mile, or, uh, strike that and reverse that, but, um, it's, we're using a lot of gas when it comes to that. We did add three new bus routes, uh, the other day. We'll probably be implementing them here at, at Bear Tavern to run to the elementary school and also the high school to eliminate the overcrowding that we've faced since the beginning of the year, and we're adding a new bus route, um, in, at Stony Brook. Again, they run 70,000 each for those routes. Courtesy busing right now, we have 144 students, but they're only contributing $59,000 to the total cost. The cost is more, that's about a $500 cost, but we're looking at it, the, the cost per seat is $1,200 almost. So it's, it's an expense that we, we wanted to provide, but it's becoming very costly. Insurance, we talked a lot about insurance, the volatility in the market and the expectation that we'll have double-digit increases in both workers' comp, property and casualty, and health insurance for next year. And the thing with health insurance, because of that chapter 44 law I mentioned earlier, we can't even negotiate it. Hey, the governor implemented a seven-year, uh, inf, uh, implementation of chapter 44, and it can't even be negotiated for another two years.
So what Bob is saying is, well, my husband and I, um, we had a tractor dealership for a while, and one of the things that tanked him is he said, we're good, my staff is going to have the same insurance that you have as a teacher. And so the rates kept going up, and he would adjust the copay that they were paying, 15, you know, $5 here, it started maybe at 10, then it was 15, then it was 20, then it was 25, right? We can't negotiate that with our staff. That's something that our hands have been tied on. That would make a big difference, but we can't do it.
The disappointing thing in that is we had, we had a great relationship with all of our bargaining, uh, units that we, um, negotiated together to help reduce the cost of health benefits. And the, the, what we had negotiated on our own without government interference was, was saving us more money than what they implemented.
Right.
They forced on us. So, you know, districts that were doing the right thing in helping defray costs of health insurance were thwarted by this, um, this chapter 44. Again, we've talked, you know, a, a lot about facilities and maintenance tonight. Staffing, um, again, we're planning, we, we need to plan a budget increase. It's, it, we're, we're a staff-based org, uh, organization. We are facing a national teacher shortage. We are no longer able to, um, hire folks that are just coming right out of college, without them trying to shop. I mean, Hopewell was a destination, and it still is for, for many folks. But for a lot of kids coming right out of college, they want the best offer. What's the, the highest salary I can get? And more often than not now, Ms. Smith is getting questions, is that the best you can do? I get it. It's a, it's a market society, but this, you know, we don't expect that anymore, and we're losing staff members because they can go elsewhere and get, um, a better salary for them. Veteran staff never would change districts. Once a teacher had been with a district for 15, 16 years, they never thought of leaving. They never would give up tenure to come to another district. Now, the, we, we are required, we've hired many teachers at the top of our salary guide, not the bottom. And it's, when you get that difference from the, a teacher at the high end of the guide retiring to a, an inexperienced teacher coming in, that was the way we saved money. We could save 200 or 300,000 dollars a year, um, on that. So, you know, we are very concerned about the contract settlements we'll be working on, currently working on two of the big ones right now, um, and others to come in, in years, in the next several years. Again, I already talked about technology, but technology is involved in everything, uh, that we do now, almost every, from, from software to textbooks. Um, you think, everybody says, don't buy textbooks anymore and, uh, just get them online. Well, they now give you the textbook and they charge you for the online.
Right. That's where the expense is.
Okay. So, we have done a lot to control costs. Again, I've talked about health benefits. We do continue to be probably a million to a million and a half dollars better than the state-sponsored health insurance plan. Um, I'm proud of what we've done with that, and, and it continues to save us money. Again, special education, we've done a ton with Ms. Donato and her team, bringing students back from, from high-cost out-of-district placements. When we do, we feel we do a much better job here, um, with our own staff. We have reduced staff, um, when we can. When we see class sizes that are creeping too low, um, we don't, we just replace those staff members. But it's becoming harder and harder to see reductions in staff, just because we're, we're starting to hit that, that upper limit that Dr. Trese, um, talked about. Again, technology, we've, we've done everything we can to economize. Um, we are paying significantly less for our broadband service in neighboring districts due to the, the skill of our department and the creative thinking that they've done, but we're running out of that. Our, our bandwidth is just not being able to keep up. We do cooperative purchasing whenever we can. As I mentioned, we're in a health consortium with 300-plus districts. We are in purchasing for supplies and equipment with hundreds of districts, four or 500 districts in, in various state-run co-ops, and also privately, private state-run co-ops to save money. And again, our technical and professional services all run through co-ops whenever we can. Again, facilities, we do, we've been able to do things in-house. We have a, a skilled staff that saves us hundreds, and I'm not joking, hundreds of thousands of dollars annually, because they can do the work without having to go to an outside So we talked a little bit about this before. 92% of the funding of your schools comes from local funding, whether it be property taxes, local revenues that I am able to raise, and the use of surplus. And the use of surplus is really coming from property taxes that we haven't spent. But again, the burden is on us. State funding is about 7% of our total, and the federal government spending is about 1%. Most of it goes to special education tuition and our title grants, which deal a lot with, um, training of our staff and students. Title I is our most economically-challenged families, that's where that money goes. But again, our title money is $80,000 if we're lucky.
And you have to spend it in a very specific way, the same with IDEA. So these aren't kind of funds we can move into other areas if we'd like. They're very prescriptive on how you can spend those funds.
Again, we are, um, still working through numbers, um, with Dr. Trese and her team. Almost daily, we're meeting now, thinking about ways to find savings. Um, we're planning on a, a deep dive, um, board retreat in February to go further into detail. A lot of the things that we're discussing right now involve staffing, and, um, we don't want to share the exact cuts until we've actually figured them out, um, because we don't want to get folks upset, um, or alarmed, if we, if we are just thinking about something and we're not to the point of making those actual cuts. Comments and questions from the board are, are, um, open now.
I just want to share that, um, your board is a board that works in committee. Most of the work that's done through finance and facility, through our education program decisions and policy are done with a smaller group of the board that kind of hash things out. This board years ago decided that this would be the one thing that we do in full committee, because that's how transparent we want to be when we have these conversations with you. Um, I've been here since Dr. Smith, the former superintendent, was here, and he was jumping up and down about these things 13 years ago when I got here, because we saw that fiscal cliff coming and we kind of kept holding it together. Um, we are there. We're hanging on the cliff with our fingernails. And, um, so when I say it this time, I know it's, well, they've said it in the past and they've kind of worked it out. We can't work it out anymore. Um, and the board's willingness to do this in full court is, is important, because that's how much we care about this community. And we want your feedback, but at this point, if I have to cut something, it's not something that, a thousand public comments are going to help. I'm going to still have to do that, because I don't know how, I can't hold this together anymore with the funds that we're getting.
Again, Dr. Trese mentioned this earlier, this is happening, and I think Drew alluded to it. This is happening all over Mercer County. Um, we are having, uh, budget meetings countywide, uh, with business administrators to discuss what they're doing to help cut their gaps. Everybody has an issue right now. I've had colleagues in East Brunswick had to cut 35 teachers, um, last year because they thought they were getting an increase in state aid, and they were, when they got the number on, in February, um, were shocked when they were cut millions, millions of dollars. Robbinsville is struggling because they were flat-funded. Okay? So this isn't unique to Hopewell. Um, I just sent the, our, uh, Dr. Trese and, and my colleagues at a, at Central Office, Jackson Township is closing a high school. Not because they want to, because they don't have the funds to keep it open any longer. And that is, been the message from the state, if you can't keep it open, then close it and increase class sizes. We are not getting sympathy from the state. The county office is very supportive of us, they're hearing what we have to say, but they're saying, you know, there isn't much that we're going to have. This is coming from the, the governor, and we hope for good news come February 27th, I believe the date is.
So we've heard a lot, um, this evening about concerns around class sizes, particularly here at Bear Tavern, where the class sizes tend to be larger than other elementary schools, in addition to the new students that have been coming in and, and are likely to continue coming in. And, right, as you've mentioned, right, money has to come from somewhere. There's no easy solution here where we can just go out and, right, increase, you know, number of classes and double them. Can we, can we share a little bit with the community, particularly here at Bear Tavern, where we know we're going to have incoming students next year, right? We're, we're at classes now in kindergarten, that's 24. You have a few additional students, you're now talking about, right, 25, 26 kids in a class plus. What is, can you talk a little bit just about the process? When we look at next year and we look at kind of, what do we think we're going to have class sizes as we look at enrollment? What is the process that, that could look like behind the scenes in term of determining the number of teachers needed and, and the number of classes needed?
Well, one, we already have been looking at that, and Bear Tavern's class size is not up 24 in every class. You're hitting sections. And that's because we already have been rerouting some of those students to Stony Brook, right? But Stony Brook is also getting the carryover from Tollgate. If there's growth at Hopewell Elementary, we'll have to figure that out, right? Um, so right now, we, we are already trying to shift students here and there based on who's coming in, but I have no idea who is coming in. If a parent, a family comes in, there's 10 kids, right? I can't predict that. We're doing our best to try to, to guesstimate based on the, on the, um, the demographic report, but, you know, folks said, well, you know, in a house with only two bedrooms, there won't be that many kids. Well, there might be 10, right? Um, I know that I started out in a little condo when I couldn't afford a bigger house, and we moved into a bigger house, right? And kids were doubling up in rooms. So, um, we do, we're doing the best we can to predict that and move them around, but we're going to, we're just going to run out of space, is what, is what the reality is. Tollgate can't take any more students, they're tiny teeny, right? Uh, and they're, and they're already taking some of the overage of students because of some of the special programs they offer there that aren't in other buildings, right? And then Hopewell Elementary is too far away. Sending kids from over here all the way over there would be cost prohibitive, and we may not even be able to find a route. And you can't have kids on the bus over an hour, because they're coming from here and you know how we're spread out geographically. So we're considering all of those things, and class size will go up. Everyone's going to be facing that. I can't promise that, oh, we hit 24, split it. I can't do that anymore. That's what we used to do. And we were just looking at our class sizes, and a lot of our classes are still mostly at 16 and 17 kids in a class, still. So it's hitting in certain area, it's hitting in certain grade levels, it's hitting in certain areas, but it's not across the school district yet. That's, that's the challenge. Will it get across the school district if they keep funding us this way? Yes. Yes.
So we, to go further, we, and I mentioned it earlier, we did add three bus routes, um, as of last week. They, I'm not sure if they're running yet, but they were approved tonight, or they're going to be approved if we ever get to the agenda, but, um, that should alleviate some of the, uh, students who are now coming from Shop, the Shopright neighborhood, they've been coming here, um, that those students are now going to be shifted over to Stony Brook to help alleviate some of it. But the, the long-term solution is, um, we're going to have to, I mean, the state is expecting class sizes to go up. They are higher here, but you do have some classes that are still below 20. So, you know, when they talk about class sizes in the state of New Jersey, I have my friend in, in Brick, they have 35, 40 in a class. So, times are changing, the only way to say is, times are changing. We're going to do what we can to move small redistricting around, but again, as Dr. Trese said, it doesn't, to take students that are coming from, you know, the Scotch Road Development and ship them up to Hopewell Elementary, it just doesn't make sense.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, we're going to, thank you, Dr. Trese and, and Mr. Colavita. I know that was a lot to go through. Do we have any old business items?
Do you have something, Mark?
No, I just said back at the agenda.
Oh, yes.
I'm going back to the agenda, okay. Thanks.
Okay, with that said, we are going to enter into our first public comments.
You can, I'll, I'll need to make an announcement, and then you can proceed. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality before you speak, and in response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up, opt to take the matter up at a future meeting, so that the matter is researched by the district administration. In addition to saying out loud your name and your address and municipality, we ask that you sign, um, your name at the podium. Public comments are now open. Oh, one, one other piece of direction from the timekeeper.
Yes, hi, I'm your friendly timekeeper. When you have 30 seconds left, I will raise the yellow, and I'll try to make eye contact that you've seen it, and then at three minutes is red. And then at three minutes is red. And just a reminder, because we know that sometimes three minutes is not enough, you do only have three minutes, but there is two public comments. You are welcome to come back for a second three minutes.
Public comment is now open.
This isn't working, this pen. Can you, can I? Okay, I appreciate it. That's all right. Okay, so do I need to tell you what my name is through the microphone?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm Michael Kelly, and I need to tell you my address? Right? Oh, okay. It's 233 Pleasant Valley Road. And it's in Titusville. Is that, is that right? Titusville is okay? Okay. And what else do I need to say? Oh, okay. Right, so anyway, I want to thank you guys all for your service. It sounds like you guys are, you know, really qualified and you really care about what's going on. And I know it's really easy to, you know, give a lot of criticism, but you guys actually have to make the decisions and run everything. So I appreciate that. Yeah, so I, I, this is the first one of these I've ever been to. The main reason I came was the class size issue. I mean, Bear Tavern has these big class sizes, and I heard a rumor that they're going to get bigger, and it sounds like that's right. I don't know how you expect us to accept that when not all class sizes are as big in the district as ours are. So why can't the other elementary schools take on more students? Why do we have to bear all these big class sizes? It's not interactive.
That's correct.
All right, well. Okay, yeah, anyway, I, I'm concerned about the class sizes here. So I have three minutes.
You can use all of your three minutes or whatever. You don't have to, it's just.
All right, well, okay, so what are your, what are your thoughts and views on AI? What do you plan to do with that? Also, you, you said, you mentioned something about AI running up electricity. Are you running like on-prem AI in the district?
I will respond after everyone's comments.
Okay. All right, well, I guess with the remaining three minutes, class sizes, class sizes, class sizes, definitely don't want those going up in Bear Tavern. Class sizes, class sizes, class sizes. Don't increase the class sizes at Bear Tavern, please. Definitely appreciate you all, though. Thank you for all you do.
All right, I got my timer here. Mark Bovanizer, Hopewell Borough. I'm not here to talk about the budget or anything. I really picked the wrong night to come to talk about the Smart Pass, but I'm going to. So I have two daughters. We've been here since 2006. My one daughter contracted a disease that she cannot control her bowels, so I, this is interactive, so I did, I watched her create the pass, which takes minutes. Then you could only go in the 200 hall. Then you, if there's two girls in line, you got to wait seven more minutes each. And then you have to wait 40 more minutes to go to the bathroom. That's not possible with someone with inflammatory bowel disease. Crohn's and colitis for people who don't know what that is. And she missed school today because she didn't want to deal with the Smart Pass. What do you have for disabled children? I just, I don't get the Smart Pass. It's, it's, I could say a lot of things, but it's not favorable to disabled children. And not only that, her disease is affected by stress. You know, the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation has an app called We Can't Wait. There's 250,000 places around the country, 32 states have legislation for bathroom access public at any time. And it's really ridiculous that you're having these kids. And again, she doesn't, she's probably going to yell at me for coming up here to do this now that everybody knows she has Crohn's disease, but I encourage her, why don't you, she's starting a Crohn's club at the school, the high school. And I'm going to ask her to work with people, and of course, there's going to be abuse, right? There's going to be kids, oh, I got Crohn's, I got Crohn's, I want to, you know, skip the Smart Pass thing. Because there's probably really good reasons for the Smart Pass, too. But I said, look, you got to find a happy medium. Everywhere we go, we do Crohn's walks every year at Northern Jersey, at Asbury Park. There are a lot of kids that have Crohn's and colitis, tons. In fact, if I took a poll here, I would say quite a few would raise your hand that has a family member, a friend, that's affected by Crohn's or colitis. You know, this doesn't help her tomorrow in school. You know, I ask you guys to do something fast, and I'll stop at two minutes and 30 seconds. Thank you.
Just to help speed things up, I did put the book, the sign-in book over here to the side of the podium, so if you're up next, you can sign up.
I did sign in a little while ago, so I think I should be.
No, no problem. Just wanted to let folks behind you know.
All right. Erin Groger, 26 Dublin Road, Pennington. So, hello. So I wanted to start by thanking all the amazing teachers who were here tonight. I don't think they're here anymore, rightfully so, it's 9:06. But I really just want to point out their hard work, their dedication. It's unmatched what we receive in the district, and I'm so incredibly thankful, especially for the teachers here at Bear Tavern. And the teachers are one of the reasons I'm here right now. I'm going to follow my script and I might come back up. My family moved to Hopewell a little over two years ago specifically because of the school district. We wanted our two girls to have a strong foundation in a nurturing environment that prioritized both social, emotional learning along with academics. I'm here tonight to express my utmost concern with the growing class sizes at Bear Tavern. I've taught in neighboring school districts for the past 14 years. I know from experience that class size matters. Not only do students feel the negative impacts of the larger sizes, but so do the teachers. When class size grows, students receive less of what they need because the teachers cannot provide the same attention to individual students. The expectation for teachers today is astronomical. Guided reading groups, small group strategy groups, conferences, meeting 101, IEPs, 504s, parents like me. It's a lot. It is a lot. And I just can't help but worry that our teachers are going to leave because they can go to another district. And I know there's problems everywhere, but I did it. I left where I was after being somewhere for a very long time to go somewhere where I felt appreciated and in a setting where I felt the students could learn best. So when looking at the growing class sizes at Bear Tavern, it's extremely concerning for me as a parent and educator. What's even more concerning to me are the inequities that are becoming ever apparent across this district. How can some schools in our district cap class sizes at 18 and Bear Tavern have class sizes today, right now, at 25 students? If class sizes are already at 25 in some grades, it's certain that the class sizes will continue to grow as the new developments continue to be built. What are we going to max out at? Numbers today at Bear Tavern kindergarten classes are 24, 20, 24, and I believe 25 students. Oh, goodness. As opposed to class sizes at Tollgate of 17, 17, and 16, 21, 18, and 18 at Stony Brook, and 21, 20 at Hopewell Elementary. That is a huge inequity for our children here. Last, but certainly not least, the teachers, the reason I'm here. The expectations are high. Am I done? Okay, I'll be back, don't worry. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Robert Gao, 800 Ridge Drive in Pennington. I, I think, you know, number one, I want to thank the board, everybody here. I know, you know, really appreciate all the work that you've done. Definitely also want to thank all the remaining teacher that works in Bear Tavern, also the principal, everybody here that works at Bear Tavern, really want to appreciate my appreciation as a parent. I have three kids in this school district. One of them actually graduated. I have a fourth grader at Bear Tavern, and I have a eighth grader at Timberlane Middle School. You know, I think there's going to be a lot to be said more about class size, but I'm definitely concerned. My mother is a teacher, my wife is a teacher, and so I definitely agree with, I think, Erin who brought that up. But actually, I'm here to talk about the AI that was brought up before, and I want our kids not talk about the energy cost that's going to arise because of AI, but rather, I want our kids to be competitive and participate in the new AI era that we're about to embark, if not already embarked. I have a, you know, my, my wife and my, my wife and I, we run a parent-run robotics team for my boys as well as a few other boys in this school district. And we were fortunate enough to participate in the state first Lego League competition, and it was eye-opening in terms of what other schools are doing, in terms of feeding their high school robotics team from not just elementary, but really what matters is the middle school. So really, I think what I would love to propose and, and, you know, have the board consider is, you know, obviously today we all talked about facilities and budget, which for sure, you know, is very critical, but I really want to bring to the attention that, of course, we need warm place, you know, and a, and a safe place for our kids, but at the same time, I think we need to prepare them for the future that is coming to us. And so I would love for the incoming budget to have a consideration for some sort of school-run robotics team that will feed into our high school team, which I know we already have one, but in the middle school. You know, I, as a parent, I, I try to sort of get as many kids involved as possible to, you know, just get robotics involved at elementary school to, to middle school. But I really think that looking at other school district who have, you know, they have multiple teams, parent-run and school-run at their district, I think that we should do that as well at middle school so that we can give our high school kids the best chance and, and, you know, expose them before high school in robotics. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Hello, I am Cheryl Serenkowski, 9 Hunter's Ridge in Hopewell Township, so Robin Iron, basically neighbors. I have a daughter here at Bear Tavern and a son who will hopefully soon be joining this school. I, as well as many other parents here, have a concern about the, the growing class sizes and the growth in general at Bear Tavern. I did a little bit of number crunching, and it looks like Bear Tavern's growth, keeping the, I guess, the graduation grades the same, has increased 10% in our school compared to 2% to the rest of the district. So obviously, we're growing here more than other places. We talked about class sizes, and my first question was, what, what do we consider a small class size? Because that was something that was mentioned as important. I think I heard 16, 17, but here at Bear Tavern excluding pre-K, it's about 21. So we're pretty far off from that 16, 17 number. I also want to know at what rate or at what class size does it get to be too big? Where are we going to cut that number off? I hear that we have class sizes already at 25 halfway through the year. Is that going to continue growing, or is there going to be a point where we say 30 is too many? Or is it 40 is too many? Or maybe 40 is not too many? And that's something that I want to understand more. Additionally, I saw that in the maybe referendum, there was talks about a Bear Tavern addition, but also that we were going to change those trailers into, I guess, more staff offices. If we're moving those classrooms into this expansion, how many classes are we actually adding? What is the net increase in class, in classes since those pre-K classes are going to be moving over? Finally, something that I always have to mention is I'm very concerned about the, the safety here at Bear Tavern, particularly when we have school-wide events or evening things. The parking lot here is incredibly small, which leads people to have to park on the street. There's no, no sidewalks, no street lamps, no crossing guards. It seems like a very dangerous situation, and as we're expanding the school, it's just going to continue getting worse, which may have to cut down on those types of events or, you know, hopefully not lead to any issues. And that's all I had today. Thank you so much.
Hi, Jackie Luthman, 9 Winding Brookway in Titusville. Not a fan of public speaking, but I'm going to go closer. I'm going to go with something that I think John hit on. You're speaking to us like we don't want the referendum to pass. We're the ones impacted most by it. I don't know what's going on with universal preschool, but now you've lumped it with that. So again, you're screwing us because if people don't want universal preschool, they're not going to vote for the Bear Tavern expansion. Right? So that's proposal two, which is Tollgate and Bear Tavern. So I don't see how you're not doing the same thing again. The only other thing is, at some point, you said 24 kids in a classroom, where 10 of them are going somewhere else, and our teachers only have 14 kids. That's not true. I don't, it's not fair to our teachers to say that. Maybe in certain classes, there are kids that are pulled out. I doubt it's 10 at a time because I don't know who the person is that's taking those 10 kids. But it's just, it'd be appreciated, I guess, if it was facts that were stated because we're trying to make decisions based off that. So all it does is upset people, and then they don't vote for what you want them to vote for. And I'll finish.
Hello, my name is Will Carter, 401 Skid Street in Pennington.
And I'm Emile Backus, Hopewell Borough.
So we're just going to reiterate some concerns that a lot of students and even some teachers have had on the Smart Pass system. So I'm the class of 2026 Junior President, and I feel like I represent my class and a large portion of HVCHS students about the Smart Pass system that was implemented over winter, after winter break. It's created some serious concerns, and while the sentiment of the change is understandable regarding safety, the system itself is not fair for, to students, and, you know, it's proven to be ineffective and inconvenient to students overall. The Smart Pass system does not overdo the simplistic and well-known system that replaced a simple sign-out sheet. It makes it difficult and frustrating to complete simple tasks such as, you know, talking with a teacher during recitation, printing, filling up your water bottle, and especially going to the bathroom. And that bathroom issue is the main concern that many students have. A maximum of seven minutes is permitted to go to the bathroom. And after you do anything, like I went to go print, and then I couldn't go to the bathroom for 40 minutes, even though they have nothing to do with each other. It is also, in order to go to the bathroom during math class, I have to take out my Chromebook, open Class Link, and then sit and wait for the queue to go down to one that I can use the bathroom. That is distracting, and it takes away from learning and class time. While, while steps like amendments to no-fly zone are undoubtedly a step forward, they do not mark the end of student campaigns against Smart Pass. The overcomplications, inefficiencies, and violation of privacy that Smart Pass creates overrule slight security benefits. These benefits offer small, if any, changes to track our intended location so that we may be found during drills or actual emergencies. However, Smart Pass obviously is not tracking student movements once they have created a pass. If a student wanders from their intended destination, Smart Pass offers no assistance for finding them. Thus, a simple and cost-effective system like a sign-out sheet will offer the same security benefits that Smart Pass will provide.
And we're spending, I'm aware, to my information, or to my knowledge, we are spending, you know, thousands of dollars on the system, too. And we don't spend any money on a sign-out sheet, so.
These sign-out sheets will not involve the overcomplication of technology or another program having access to student information. We hold on to the belief that the system does not justify the cost or the time and privacy of the students. High school students should have the trust to go to the bathroom, and teachers should be able to devote their time to doing their jobs effectively rather than monitoring us like elementary school students.
like elementary school students. We feel that it is ineffective, inconvenient, and distracting to pull out your Chromebook, open Class Link, and wait in a queue, all while trying to learn during class. We feel it is a breach of student privacy to have another program with our personal information. We believe that going to the bathroom is a natural function of the human body and not something to be tracked in this dystopian way. We strongly advise that the protests continue and that students continue to sign physical and online petitions, some of which have well over 300 signatures, to voice their concerns and make a stand and end Smart Pass at Hopewell.
There are a lot of signatures out there. Like, I'm holding one with over about 100 signatures, and then there's ones online with roughly almost 400 signatures from students, teachers, and parents. I feel like it is in the best interest of the entire, at least the high school, to either remove or make some serious changes on the Smart Pass system. Thank you.
Just for fairness, we did double that time to six minutes in case people were, in case people were timing.
Well done, gentlemen. That's a tough act to follow there. Dave Stradic, 23 Diverty Road, Hopewell Township. My message tonight is for the board. I first reached out to the board in April of last year regarding the unexpected elimination of kindergarten assistants without prior notice or discussion. The lack of transparency and clarity about how these positions were being redistributed was alarming. And coincidentally, now we have 25, 26 kids in a kindergarten classroom. How nice would it be to have those assistants at this point? About a month ago, I sent an email with concerns regarding our school district's policy on lice. In both cases, there was no response from the board. And I heard Mr. Peters mention to contact elected officials in Hopewell Township about the budget. Well, you're all elected officials representing us, and nobody has even acknowledged my emails. So I have lost faith in this board, that they're representing the interests of our community, if you can't even communicate with us. And if you've been told by administrators not to communicate with the public, that's a problem. You are elected to do that. You're elected to represent our interests. Allow me to share a little bit about myself, so you understand my perspective and what I bring. I hold a doctorate from the University of Virginia, as well as degrees from Virginia Tech, SUNY Patston, and Carleton University in Canada. Additionally, completed graduate programs in educational leadership from George Washington University. Professionally, have served as an elementary teacher, vice principal, and for the last 10 years, an elementary principal in a blue-ribbon K-5 school. For those of you who may not be aware, Hopewell schools currently permit students with live lice to remain in the classroom. These children then continue to travel home on crowded buses, exposing additional students and staff. Furthermore, parents of exposed children are not even informed when a child in their class is dealing with a lice infestation. When I inquired about this policy, I was told the decision was based on CDC guidelines. What I have yet to hear is a clear rationale for why primary-age children take a walk out in the kindergarten playground, take a walk when first-grade students are playing, tell me you don't see their heads together, that they're walking arm-in-arm. Due to these failed policies, my daughter has contracted lice twice, and at great expense, both in time and dollars, we dealt with this issue. My wife now panics if I scratch my head inadvertently. She also spends 30 minutes every morning putting my daughter in braids and applying rosemary or peppermint spray. How is that okay with this board and this administration? Dr. Therese's response to my concerns did not address any of the critical issues. Instead, I was simply told this policy aligns with CDC recommendations. There was zero consideration for the well-being of other students, families, and staff who were impacted by this decision. I'm going to pause here and finish the second part during the next public comment. I will recognize that while I had no response from my substantive emails to this board, Mr. Slotman and Dr. Siliyanu both reached out and responded to my email asking for more time tonight, and I appreciate that. This will be to be continued. Thank you.
My name is Caitlin Stradic, also reside at 23 Diverty Road. I'm a mom to one Bear Tavern graduate, two current Bear Tavern students, and one future Bear Tavern student. I typically leave the public speaking to my husband, but I felt moved to speak tonight on behalf of our Bear Tavern teachers, because what is being asked of them currently is simply not fair. Many Bear Tavern classrooms, including my son's third-grade class, shout-outs to Ms. Machado, who's burning the midnight oil here with us. She has 24 students in her class. Ms. Finnegan has 25. And Tollgate's third-grade classes maintain class sizes of 17 and 18 students. Regarding that, I think some transparency would go a long way with the community. We were told at the Bear Tavern PTO meeting that you visited Dr. Therese, that the reason why Tollgate has grade levels capped is due to smaller classrooms and an old building. However, I think that everyone would like to know how you decided on these numbers, because there's a big difference between 17 and 25, i.e., square footage per student for Tollgate versus Bear Tavern. I'm not sure how many of you on the board or administration have a background in elementary education, but I do. I taught for eight years in the elementary setting prior to staying home to raise my children, with a pretty solid understanding of what the job entails. Making connections with students, differentiating instruction, communicating effectively with parents are just a few aspects of the job that gets significantly harder as the class sizes get larger. Let's go back to my son's classroom at 750 square feet with 24 third graders. Also, I want to mention, none of those 24 students leave the classroom at any point in the day. With the addition of more students, teachers will be forced to remove their carpets in their classroom, which currently provides space for community building, read-alouds, interactive learning, in grades kindergarten through third grade. Is it really fair to make five-through-nine-year-olds sit in desks all day long? It certainly isn't best practice. I understand the budget is tight, and hiring more teachers is difficult with all the facilities and native intention. I voted yes for the random, for what it's worth, so. But with all the new developments on for Bear Tavern, it's creating a very inequitable educational experience for our kids. The time to address this is right now. Tollgate has classes capped under 20 due to, quote, "space limitations," and the new registrations in, quote, "full classes" are sent to Stony Brook. Why not be proactive and send the new registrations from the Scotch Road or ShopRite Development to Stony Brook now, rather than waiting until we reach a breaking point and redistricting, which will uproot families like us who are currently established and settled at Bear Tavern? I know transportation costs were cited as a reason that this idea was shot down, yet we've added three new buses at 70,000 apiece, so I'm not sure where the savings is by having them go here instead of Stony Brook. Anyway, lastly, we're fortunate to have many exceptional teachers at Bear Tavern, but they aren't going to want to stick around to teach classes with 30 kids when they could teach a class of 18 elsewhere. Bear Tavern teachers and students deserve better, and we, as a community, deserve more transparency and better communication for the decisions made at the district level that seriously impact our children. Thank you.
I'm Kate Lyons, and I live at 77 Harberton Mount Airy, and while the mailing address is Lambertville, it is Hopewell Township. I could not say as eloquently as everybody else has said the concerns about the classroom size at Bear Tavern. But what I'd like to hear from you guys is how you're going to convince the community, not only to vote for the referendum, but to show up for the referendum. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I was astounded at how low of a turnout it was. And I was also astounded at how, what I heard about online and what I saw in the community were signs against it. There was never anybody who was campaigning for it, who was informing the public the benefits of it. All we heard, as the board has already outlined, was misinformation. How will we, how will you guys inform the public, correct misinformation, and what can we do? Because we do want to work as a team. We do, this is a group of supporters who want that referendum to pass. How can it pass when nobody's showing up and all we hear are soundbites of how terrible it is and how there's aspects of it that aren't necessary? So I'd like to hear how we can help and what you guys are going to be doing to convince the public to show up and vote for the referendum for our kids. Thank you.
Hi, Sam Klein, 100 Bradford Lane, Hopewell Township. Kind of echoing what she just said, I think perception's reality, and unfortunately, in today's world, the facts don't always matter. So if, you know, the pilot money doesn't come through, and you have that tacked to the referendum, and everyone's kind of seeing that, I don't really think it has a chance of passing again, despite what we all may want, and what you guys outline is clearly necessary. I think a lot of the township perceives that developers got a break, and they're just going to get away with more, while mayors are bickering, and no one's down with that. That's not great. On top of that, speaking out of pure ignorance of how you guys do your bidding for all of your projects, some of the costs that you guys displayed for things like six tennis courts being $685,000 on existing courts that the grounds level, it's not like you're starting from zero. I don't understand how that's possible. As someone who has, I worked at Tennis Channel, I traveled the world, I've been to every single major tennis court on earth multiple times. How could it possibly cost that much? I don't know. And then, how does that translate to other projects? So I don't know if there's a level of transparency in the bidding or the contractors you guys use. I know famously, government projects get ripped off by contractors. Guys who paved my driveway at my last house said as much when they get government contracts. They're like, yes, we're in the money. So I don't know if that's happening to you guys, and if there's more rigor needed in the process of figuring out the appropriate vendors. But the $685,000 on the courts is the one thing that alerted me, like, maybe there's something going on there. Maybe you guys, there needs to be some additional process, or, I don't know. It just seems out of hand based on that. Then, totally unrelated, we saw a survey come out for Universal Pre-K, which I think is a great thing for the township to aspire to. It doesn't sound like maybe that's realistic in the short term, based on all of the things you guys outlined. But a lot of my friends who have kids who aren't in the district yet because they're zero to three had no idea, didn't get the survey. So I was wondering how we can get it to people who it's the most relevant to down the line, families who are planning to have kids or have young children zero to three, so that they can plan accordingly. At this point, you guys are just collecting data and seeing if there's interest. Last part on that is, I know there's potential grant money from the state, so I think people who are filling out that survey would want to have some idea of what it would cost and how much it would cost if the grant money does go away, so they can make a full, informed decision. Thank you.
Any more questions on this round before we?
It's up to you. You can go ahead.
Sorry, I've never been to one of these before, so I don't know how this process works. Melissa Chimbangu, I live at Two State Park Drive here in Titusville. The way that the potential, I know you keep couching it, referendum is going to be, there'll be two questions. The second one, obviously, everyone here cares very deeply about, because it relates to Bear Tavern. I'm curious how, given the poor communication that surrounded the first referendum, I'm curious how you guys are going to make other parts of this town care, right? Because this is a, quote, "Bear Tavern issue." It's a, quote, "Tollgate issue," but it's not, right? It's an entire district's issue. And I think people might say yes to question one and then check out, right? Because it's not their issue, it doesn't impact them. So I think it's really important that you guys figure out a way to address that. And, you know, I think the same thing applies here to the class sizes. I'm not going to reiterate what other parents have said. I think they've done a really great job, and you guys get it, and hopefully will have some answers for us, because we're all here at 9:30 at night because we do care. But again, it's not just a Bear Tavern issue, right? Like, you got to figure it out, right? Like, for the entire district, you got to figure it out. Like, you can't just keep piling kids into Bear Tavern and think at some point that's not going to create a Stony Brook problem, right? Like, we're going to max out at some point, and then kids are going to go to Stony Brook, and then you're going to have pissed-off parents at Stony Brook, and then somehow that's going to overfill, right? So there's got to be more communication from you guys across the district of, hey, Hopewell Township, our plan at Bear Tavern is to cap at this number, because it's just not fair to these teachers and these children. It's not fair to the people who are maintaining these schools, right? It's more wear and tear on everything. But our choice at Bear Tavern is to cap at this, which means Stony Brook, you're getting this, and the reason we're doing that, community, is because of X, Y, Z. Like, that communication hasn't happened, we've just borne the brunt of it all, and that's just not fair.
Hi, Allison Larthy, Five State Park Drive, Titusville. I was concerned, looking at how the question is being phrased, that part one, part two, and it really feels like the necessary repairs, renovations, and expansions with Bear Tavern are kind of being held hostage with this pilot situation, which is creating a lot of the inequities that we're hearing about today. So that's my main concern, and I'd really like that to be considered more thoroughly with the district. Thank you.
So we have a number of issues, and I think that the best way to address them is to let you comment on the poor issues around class size and also, we'll hold off until the end some of the smaller, single individual comments.
Yes, I'm going to try to go through. So I'm going to start with the pilot. As Mr. Peters shared, and all of us have shared, we have been in several meetings with members of our municipalities' leadership. We've met with the mayors, and that is all I can do. It is not my pilot, it's not the district pilot. I can't impact or answer any of your questions about the pilot, I can't stop them from coming. They are allowed by the state of New Jersey, so that's something you have to talk to the leadership of the municipalities about, you have to talk to the state of New Jersey about. I can't impact that. All I can do is continue to advocate very rigorously for you all, and I have been. I'm not one to mince words with you all. I'm very, I hear we're not transparent. I started this presentation about budgets, saying that class sizes will go up. I didn't say Bear Tavern's class size would go up. I go to all the classes. Some classes, there are a lot of pullouts. I'm saying this about kindergarten. We have not done away with all of our kindergarten paras. We still have kindergarten paras. We actually are above the state adequacy on paras. We have more paras than districts around us have. We have so many paras, it's hard to staff. And we get questioned by the state every time we go to budget time, why do we have such high numbers of paras? So we have to be more efficient, because one, I can't staff them, and two, I can't afford them. So we do have paras that are shared through rooms. The primary grades are a priority. I'm going to try to keep those down as low as possible. But when I say class sizes go up, 17 and 16 are not going to be anywhere in the district. That is how we're figuring out how we balance a budget with a $5 million hole in it right now. That is tied up in teacher's salary. And if you don't have space to begin with, there's only so many places I can split to if you don't have the room. So you need the rooms that we're talking about in the addition, and we may even flood over into the space where we want to turn in our offices. Because this is the way it is in the state of New Jersey. And I know that this is hard on teachers. I don't like it either. But you'd be hard-pressed to find any district that are going to have these class sizes. Mr. Resnick ran the numbers. He said, why is this so high? He's a numbers guy. You have all the fiscally responsible people on your facilities' finance board. And his data dive, outside of what we were telling him, was our class size is small compared to most other districts. Why is that? Because they can't afford it anymore, and they've already started increasing their class size. We are all facing this, because most of our budget is in teacher salary and benefits. I'm doing the best I can to split classes, but 25 and 26 is what you're going to be seeing probably next year across the district, not just at Bear Tavern, across the district as best I can. Tollgate, when I say that they've hit that occasionally, they've hit 23, 24, and then sometimes we've had to close it at that point. We've had that happen at a grade level. What I don't like for Hopewell is it's going to happen across all grade levels and across all schools, because we just can't fund it anymore. It's just at that point.
I just want to underscore, the balancing is already happening. Dr. Therese mentioned, as people come in, they are not, if the class size is high, they are already being moved to a different school. So it is being managed as best it can. The other issue, though, as mentioned as well, is that we can't control who comes in and where they locate. So the first assessment is, if they are in the natural Bear Tavern area, they're going, this class that that child is going to move into is being assessed. And that is unfortunately not something we can predict. So the transparency is after the fact. So I just, I really want to ask the community to assess how quickly they expect information to flow in balance with the information as it's coming to us. There is no holding back, there is no lying about the numbers. There is just what's being managed as it comes to us, and then it comes to you, and there's rarely a gap. So that spreadsheet that was put together is the thing that they look at on a regular basis before any decisions are made where to assign a new child in this school district. And the, the other thing that is important to note is that the, when we have a tough decision, we have to look at buses. That is our obligation. So it is balancing a number of things and I, I get, I fundamentally understand. I was raised by educators, multi-generations of educators in my life. So I get it and I have done a lot of work in schools. So I am not challenging on your concern. What I'm asking you is to balance what is available as options to this school district under the circumstances. Nobody wants to have big class sizes. Nobody signs up for giant class sizes. But it is being made every single day as every new child comes in. And you have families, right? Where one child might be in a, a class size that's too big and their sibling is younger and a grade below might be a class size that's okay. Are you gonna split those kids? There's a lot of decisions. So I ask for your grace in some of this. We are looking at, at all. And if there is a more, these people are not more creative than you could ask for. So again, I'm not asking you to not be upset. I'm not asking you to not challenge the school district, but I guarantee you that this body of people are looking at every possibility to manage it along the way. We have unknown. We have building, houses being built. We have no control over the pace of which they come in or are being filled or even sold. So we're managing. And I mean, I'm not, I'm not managing. Our administration is managing and we, we as a board support them in managing and we get it's frustrating. But we're all kind of flying a little blind. So a little grace and feedback in a natural way is important. But there is no lack of transparency and there most certainly is no deception involved in the numbers.
So what we're gonna be doing this summer is looking at, again, we're probably gonna have to redistrict to one alleviate the pressure that's on you. But again, I'm gonna have to increase class size everywhere to be able to continue to afford this, to try to stop adding buses because as much as we would like school start time, that's 30 routes when we researched this the last time. I can't afford to add one more route. These routes that we added, we didn't budget for. So that's a struggle in and of itself. Another question was about the, the pre-K. We are not sure that we can do universal pre-K. We are just in the preliminary stages of looking at the grant money that's available. If it's an opportunity to bring that to you, it would be something that we're only gonna do if it's free and it's full day. That's one of the requirements anyway, that it's full day and that we have the space. Already we're running into a wall with just the, just the, the quick survey we did and we have a way to project those who aren't here based on existing class sizes that we would need 30 classrooms. I don't know that we can come up with 30 classrooms even if they fund some of it, which they're only gonna fund some building. I was looking at that, is this is an opportunity for me to bring in funds that can help us with the expansion on Bear Tavern and bring universal pre-K. So now what we're doing and Ms. Donardo is doing and Ms. Plitzes is working on, is our meeting with outside vendors where some of you may already be paying tuition to see if it's something that we can offer outside of the school district where you don't have to pay for it. So we're working at ways to alleviate the cost to you in the best way we can because if there's a grant out there, I'm gonna figure out if it's something that they're gonna, that we can get in here in Hopewell. Now, it's hard because they consider us a fluid district and a lot of times they say no. But I'm gonna apply to everything and all they can do is say no to me. So that's why I asked about universal pre-K. In terms of the referendum, yes, there were a lot of signs and a lot of campaigning against us. A school district's hand is tied when we go to referendum with sharing information. We can only share information and I'm not supposed to be overly coercive, right? In selling it to you. I can say, this is the information, it's up to you. We pushed tonight what we were supposed to be doing. And I am gonna push because I know how much you need this as a district. I'm gonna push that. What I can't do is hang up signs. I can't go on social media and fight. I need parents to do that. And I'm so grateful that many parents have signed up as I've been going around to these PTOs and they've offered to help me with the campaigning. You can put up signs. You can do all those things, I cannot. So that's the reason why I wasn't able to jump on Facebook and argue with them and all that or put out my own signs. I'm not allowed to put them up. So we'll do what we can to, to get the information out. I held many of these last time. Folks didn't come and I understand that you all are very busy. And now that it's like a crucial thing, I'm glad people are listening. I'm still not sure that we'll convince you, but I'm gonna keep asking because I know this is one of the only ways we're gonna get ahead on these projects is if we, if we try to go to referendum.
I, I do take the feedback about the two questions. I mean, I think that's feedback we have to listen to and the, the facilities committee will discuss that. The two separate questions on the referendum. So we'll, we'll take that back to committee and hammer through the risk profile on one or two questions.
I like one question.
I do, I do too. And then I just, there's.
Wasn't there parking as part of that project too, Bob, for Bear Tavern?
No.
There, I thought there was one, that we were gonna look at that.
Not here.
Okay, so we, let's just talk to the, to the, to the architect about that. I don't know what, if, what could be done about that. That's a question. We'll, we'll explore the parking. I felt like we were gonna look at that, so. Somebody asked about the cost of the tennis courts. Yeah, we'll get back to that. I'll get back to that. I wanna make sure that I don't miss, as I go through this. Somebody asked about the cost of the tennis courts and they were expensive and they weren't sure that they, they cost that much? Yes. Everything costs a lot more than it costs than the projects we do at home. We have to go through certain vendors that are vetted and we go with low bid, believe it or not. The district has to go with the lowest bid. Where you have contracts, contractors come to your house, I don't know about you, but I try to get the mid, middle of the road, we're not allowed to do that. We have to go with the lowest bidder. And that's just what things cost in schools. Nothing is inexpensive and we do have to build in a certain way.
So just to also clarify, in terms of, there were additional work that was not just surfacing. It was actually drainage and also around the tennis court. So it wasn't.
The entire court was ripped apart and restarted from scratch. The reason why they had to be replaced was because there was water that infiltrated under the.
Service.
Courts and they had to have a whole new drainage system. The other thing that drives up cost for school districts is prevailing wage. We're required by law to pay prevailing wage and take the lowest responsible bidder.
I would say we could talk more about this in like committees, but I think, you know, that was something that came up in the last referendum of people, right? If, if I only see this description and this number and then I start to have questions, so it might be something we should look at in terms of, right? Any of those areas that might have descriptions, be really clear like what all is included in it, kind of with a second look. I think that's a, we, we don't wanna lose a referendum because people don't understand how much work is, is actually gonna be done.
There was a question about, I think I covered the class size. I'll get back to the AI. There was a question about the lice. I did respond to the, the parent email in, in quite extensively. When I got the email, especially from a fellow educator and someone who's a, a school, school building leader. And you know, the lice policy has been in place since I've been in the district. I was a middle school principal, so we had lice incidents too, but we didn't have them to the level that, you know, happened at the elementary at some point. But we've been dealing with this, this way for a while. And I, and after I got the email, I said, let me go do research. Are we doing what we should be doing? Is this, is this, why are we doing this? And so I looked into the policy and I saw that we were following guidelines from the, pediatric, the Academy of Pediatric, from school nurses and what the expectation is from the New Jersey Department of Education and the New Jersey Department of Ed. So I called around, some districts are doing it the old fashioned way with the no, so-called no-knit policies. The state is so adamant that that's not what we're supposed to be doing. They put out clarification last year saying, you should not be doing that. I went further and I called the executive superintendent of Mercer County, who quickly showed me to that page and said, this is what you're supposed to be doing. You're supposed to be following the policy that you're following now, which is alert families when someone has lice in a classroom. We don't say specifically. We alert the classrooms. I'm sorry, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna, we alert the classroom to let them know that there's an incident. We're not gonna let you know the student. If it happened in a classroom and we've identified it to that classroom, the nurse, if they've identified someone who has it specifically, we'll work directly with those parents to remediate the lice. The child goes home that day. The child keeps, the family keep working with the nurse until that's remediated. And that's how we do it. The days where someone had lice and you were sent home until you had no knits is not what this guidance is from the state and that's what, not what we are, should be doing. So the executive superintendent said, that's what we ought to be doing and you're following it. And he was interested to know just what district wasn't. And I didn't share that with him. And I also called our school doctor as well, our district physician to say, okay, let me just go this one more step. And he said the same thing, sent me to the same page and said, you're not, you, there's no, no-knit policies anymore. You're supposed to be following this. And this guidance came out because districts aren't following it. So that's why we do it. Whether we like it or not, this is what the guidance says. This is what the recommendations are and that's why we follow it that way. I know it's a nuisance. I know it's horrible. I remember ring room going through my family, all right? It's, it's a hard thing to remediate, but that is the guidance that we have to follow. And I did, did that long answer as well as all the guidance and, and I did research it and that's where we are. That's probably why the board didn't respond because I did respond in that long research email. And I didn't do it knee jerk. I really did dig into it because I wanted to make sure that we were following Beck's practices. I, I do value that that came from you as an educator, but that's, that's really not what we're supposed to be doing anymore. I'm gonna move to the AI. Yes, we encourage AI in this district. We don't encourage kids to cheat with AI. And so we're working very closely with the policy committee to develop an AI policy. There is something that has been released now from Strauss Esme, some lawyers and policy writers that write AI. What Bob was referring to is that overall, the energy that drive, that costs associate with running AI period in the country, he's not talking about here specifically in the school district. So yes, if you're not teaching a kid how to use AI appropriately, and adults, if you're not using it appropriately, you're probably not saving yourself the time that you ought to be able to saving, save, right? They are, it is a great time saver, but it hallucinates. It doesn't give accurate information sometimes. You, you need to, it's a great way to spark ideas, but I still want kids to be able to research and write on their own, right? So all of those things are marrying together and we have our media specialists and our teachers embracing, how do we teach kids to leverage AI to, to make their lives easier, to make jobs easier to do, but also know the information to know if, if what AI is kicking out is accurate or not accurate. And still, I need to be able to write a paper by myself in sight appropriately. So all of those things we are working on. You asked about a robotics class at the middle school. There was a robotics class at the middle school at one point. We do have it on the books. It, it's a, a balance of having an advisor who's willing to do it. We do pay the advisor to do it. And then having kids of interest. Again, we will keep any elected, extracurricular you like as long as parents are able to help fund it now because that's not something we, we're gonna be able to just continue to fund on our own because robotics is quite expensive. But there is one on the books at the middle school that was in, running at one point. It may not be running now for a lot of reasons. I'm guessing probably because of a lack of an advisor, because we still have that in place. Talked about class size, talked about AI. Smart passes, I wanna get to that for the kiddos. The disability issue and the smart passes. So as I stated early on, when Ms. Lee was here, our student, representative of the board, there is always a teacher override and just like always, there are always exceptions to the rules. We have students and Mr. Donardo can share that have individual education plans or needs or health needs. They always get special treatment and if they need that, please, your, your nurse will know that, your principals will know that and those arrangements will be made for those students who really do have those needs.
Yeah, so especially with regarding medical conditions and I actually know this firsthand because my son had a medical condition and a 504 plan here. 504 plans, that's why they're in place. So if you do have a child that does have a medical condition, they should speak to their counselor and work through the process. And that 504 plan will provide the accommodations necessary to support those medical issues.
So to the young men that came and spoke, I, I was so proud of you for getting up and speaking up for yourself. Please take your long, yes, give them a round of applause. Please take your list of Ms. Riley. She is going to present to the board who's already asked for an update on how that's going. She knows there's some kinks. The smart pass exists in other districts. She saw it in some other districts that it's working well. They're just rolling it out. It's, I know it's shaky, but she does value your opinion. That's why she fixed the, the zero no-fly. Keep tweaking it. We're gonna keep tweaking it and make it work. The old paper wasn't working, that's why we went to this system. And yeah, I know people are gonna not maybe be where they're supposed to be. But the good thing about Hopewell Kids is 99% of the time you are where you're supposed to be. So as long as we can account for you and we have a way that's automated to do that, not paper, because if, if we lock down, this, being able to open a computer, which our, Hopewell Township police have access to and so do the Pennington police, then go run through a hallway that might be locked down and go get this is not the way, right? So we, this'll work, but I, we need your feedback to make it work. So keep giving us feedback and we'll keep tweaking it until we get it right. I promise you that. There's always an override too. Even if you don't have a medical problem, if you really have to go, your teacher can generate that for you. So make sure that the teacher's generating a pass if you really need to go. You don't have to go through that 40-minute wait if it's, if you gotta go. Medical or not. Oh, Bob, what was the net number of classrooms in that addition? 10.
I don't, I mean, we're not using, we're not using the trailers for regular ed.
I'm talking about the, the one, the addition. How many classrooms are gonna be in there?
10 new classrooms, but there's no net because there's, there's no regular ed being used in the. Paul, I'm not sure how many are in there for, for preschool. It's six. So net four.
I, I just wanted to make a comment that, I'm gonna say when we go back to referendum. Please, so board members, we're not allowed to campaign. So we're not allowed to go out in the community and say, but we definitely can if a community member comes to us and asks for clarification, like why are we replacing the roofs we just replaced? We can say, we are not replacing the roofs we just replaced. So we can talk about misinformation that might be out in the community, but we can't go on Facebook, we can't do that. So I just stress, come and talk with us. Talk with the district because we can give real information out. We can't advocate, which I, I know it sounds so silly, like why, why wouldn't a board be able to advocate? But that is the law. We're not allowed to campaign, but we can tell you real information. So please, if you hear something out in the community, come speak with us and then you can tell your fellow community members, no, that's not true.
So on that, I'll, because I had a comment on that. So one of the things, picking up on that, one of the things we have to sit through every single year and it's in public meeting, last meeting, so you can go and watch it on video, is the ethics training. Where we're told explicitly, the board acts as a board, members, not as individual members. We are ethically, legally prohibited from speaking on behalf of the board except through the board president, which is why when you send, and you as a public school principal can check this in your district, when you guys send an email to the board, you will usually only hear back from either Dr. Treese or the board president. That doesn't mean we don't read it. That doesn't mean we don't take that information into account and sometimes folks will go and ask you for more information. In most cases, unless there's a simple factual answer, right? Like, why are you replacing new roofs? The factual response is, we're not, right? Other than that, we cannot respond to you. We're legally prohibited. And it's the same answer to why weren't we out campaigning for the last referendum? Because as much as I would have liked to, I do not relish seeing my name in, in the paper, having been censured for doing something that is illegal. So unfortunately, we are in this state on many of these issues. I find it extremely frustrating, as you can tell, right? But just because we're not responding doesn't mean we're not listening. We're just not allowed to respond. You will usually get one response from either Dr. Treese or Ms. Williams-Galiano. That is the way the state of New Jersey set this stuff up. So that was, yeah.
No, they're in the background saying, what is up with that lice policy? Why didn't you do this and why didn't you do that? Could you answer this question? They're, they're petitioning for you in the background, though they are not permitted to do that.
And then since I grabbed the mic, then I'll make a second comment, which is unrelated to this, which is on. I know when I say this to you, this is, this is not going to say it, but I will make you a promise that as we have these board meetings in the other three elementary schools, I will make that, that same statement. If we do not build additions, this will not be a tall-gating and a bear tavern problem. I sympathize very much with what the administration has to do with the immediate influx of, of students, and I cannot fault them for the struggles that they're having. But my expectation in the long term is that there will be equity between all four elementary schools on class sizes. So if we don't build, all four elementary schools will suffer. That is my expectation for what's going to happen, because there has to be equity between all four elementary. Well, but it's going to be, the extent of suffering is going to be amplified significantly. There is this much suffering or that much suffering, but it will be in the long term spread across all four elementary schools.
I know, I just, I just want to say, I want to say this again, because you're not hearing me. Class size is going up across the district because we can't afford to do this anymore, period. So this will be this, looking like this, all over Hopewell, 25, 26. And we already are rerouting folks to start making that happen, but next year, it's, it's going to be very real. It, it has to be. I can't continue to do this. We can't. We can't continue to fund this. And there won't be a district in the state of New Jersey that is not facing the same thing. This is just where we are. That's what I'm trying to make clear. This is just where we are. I don't want it to be like this. I hate that. I hate it. But I just, I can't, I don't have a money tree outback. I don't have any more ways to cut besides staffing. That's where the money is.
Okay.
I just wanted to, I wanted to quickly add. Firstly, just for the students, if you're still here, thank you so much for your perspective. I think all of us as board members can try and understand the smart pass system, but not being in the classroom is, is a different experience. So I can at least commit that I'll be definitely pushing the administration to really reevaluate what that looks like in our classrooms. I will say, for, for the referendum communications, I really want to echo what Mr. Resnick was saying. But I, I will also say, now being on the Community Relations Committee for this upcoming academic year, we definitely want to push the envelope on what is possible in engaging alternative media sources and making sure that we are spreading the message as loudly and as clearly as possible against the misinformation that we're going to expect again, this time around, for the same referendum. Last year, a lot of that miscommunication came on online platforms like Facebook, sometimes in local news sources, where we do have limited abilities in, in what we can communicate. But I can tell you as an individual board member, who oftentimes toes the line on what I'm able to communicate publicly, we're going to do our best to make sure that we're meeting you where you're at. And while I understand what Mr. Resnick was saying about, and I'm sorry, what, what Ms. Genovese was saying about, you know, coming to us with an issue, we can clarify it, then you go back. We also do have a responsibility to come directly to you, meet you where you are, and to just be more proactive in communicating. So I do want to express that as someone who's on the Community Relations Committee. I know Mr. Slotman, as the new chairs, is very committed to making sure that we're spreading the word as much as possible. But we are unfortunately bound by some pretty not well-thought-out and not, not very phenomenal case law that limits our abilities to speak freely. So I just want to give that perspective as a community relations member and, and someone that really was frustrated by the amount of disinformation, misinformation about the referendum. And frankly, I encourage all of you to look into who funded that disinformation campaign, because it, it was extremely frustrating to see, you know, former leaders of our town come out against the, the very institution of our town that not only unifies our three municipalities, but also serves, you know, our, our most important demographic, which is our children. So that's all.
Thank you.
Can I just make one or two comments here? I know we all want to keep going, but I'd like to.
This is important.
Yeah, it is, it is. So I'll just start on a couple of quick items. So the smart pass, really looking forward to hearing more about this. Kudos to the young guys that were here. Keep going. I mean, I'm going to probably put a line in the sand here. You're going to have to convince me really hard that this makes any sense. Just being very candid. I don't see a world where we should keep doing this for a lot of reasons. I don't typically do this publicly, but I'm going to say it just right now. I'm looking forward to hearing about it more. I may change my mind, but I don't see it right now. Regarding the life situation, I think, I've talked about this in the past, maybe two years ago, about what sort of opportunity we have to talk to the state about doing something outside of their guidance. I think we should maybe have a conversation about this more. Don't know how that looks, but I would encourage us to talk about it. And I'm not looking for applause when I say that. I'm just thinking about my own kids here, to be very candid. Regarding the budget piece, I'm, I'm just going to make this statement, and I know there's a lot of emotions about it right now. But, you know, this is a, back to what I said before, this is a money problem, right? This isn't a, we are never going to balance. I'm just going to say that. There's no balance here. I would call it harmonization, maybe, but we're not going to be able to balance. Someone's going to feel like they're getting the short end of the stick here, no matter which way we cut it. I mean, there's not going to be two ways around it. And I, I think it's a, a tough conversation that we're going to continue to have, but we need to have it. And I'm glad that we're all talking about it. I'm glad that you guys are coming out and talking about it. There are short, short-term fixes, sure. I'm a Hopewell Borough resident. I'm, I'm the lone representative of Hopewell Borough. I am the beneficiary of a class of 17, and I've already told my town that we're going to 25, right? Because we know we have to. And nobody's happy with me about it. But it's just unfortunately the reality that we all face. And the challenge that we look at is if you look at how we do a budget, we don't have enough money coming in to pay for our bills. That's what it comes down to. And yes, 90 some odd percent, whatever the percentage is, 87% comes down to curriculum, comes down to programming, comes down to teachers, which is why we're all here, because we care about them, we care about our kids, we care about us getting a good education. But we're going to have to make some really tough freaking decisions over the course of the next six months. And we're not going to have people be happy with us, and I've told the administration, I'm willing to walk out and have tomatoes thrown at me and talk about it, because I'm the finance chair. So I'm going to be the guy that has to hear the most about it. But I'm willing to do that for the sole purpose of saying that we all have to collectively come together and say, this isn't going to be equal. It's going to be far from it. Someone's going to get the short end of the stick, and this is only the beginning, right? So this is a forewarning for the community of like, this is only the beginning. The last thing I'll say about the referendum, I hope everybody who's a Hopewell Township resident here shows up at the Hopewell Township meetings, and you guys share your feelings about the pilot program. Because it is important. You guys have to go there, go to these government meetings, show up to Hopewell Township, tell them how you feel, right? That's the, exactly, they are. We know that. But from the township residents, you guys can help that out, because that does play into, as Dr. Tree said, our discussions with them about getting a commitment back, which we have not yet to get. So I would encourage you guys to do that, because you guys have passion. I love it. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Mark, your point around the dialogue, the discussion, A-plus for, for the passion and the commitment and the focus of details and the numbers. And we're going to have to continue to work this conversation together. But just trust, 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 that there is a zillion moving parts and really amazing intention, and it's not going to always look balanced, but there is a goal at the end of the, at the end of this to try to move things as information or as families come in. The last thing I'll say about the referendum and communication, there is, has been use of the editorial page to say things that no one else can say. That is unfortunate, because that is a great deal of source of information in addition to them building a website and doing all the things that are counteractive to what we are doing. People were being sent to their website, not to our website. So in terms of transparency, know your source, and also know that every communication we send, if there is a press release that goes out, we send it out to all the news sources, and they choose whether to pick it up or not. So be clear, that editorial page is the same page that did not post our public, our press releases. That's not fair to you, but that's the facts. And I'm saying this because you need to understand the complexity of not just our communication challenges, but how much we need the community to really come forth in, in this round. All right, saying.
I gotta add one more thing. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Quickly. I will say one, another, to give both Dr. Trees and our board president credit, when we did use, when we did end up sending out mailers that were very helpful and colorful, we were criticized for using taxpayer dollars to send out mailers, so I will say that. And in regards to what Mr. Peters talked about with showing up to the Hopewell Township Committee meetings, I'll offer the alternative perspective of also showing up to the Pennington Borough and Hopewell Borough meetings. The lawsuit is initiated by one side, and that happens to be in the situation, the boroughs, and we're not here to debate the merits of that lawsuit, but it would be, we'd be remiss if we were not mentioned as a two-sided issue. And it's important to, to make ourselves heard to all the parties. And while we don't have, you know, a legal commitment in terms of Hopewell Township dedicating pilot funds to HOPE, to, to HVRSD, we do have several instances of written commitment in Mercer Me and other local news sources from the mayor saying that they will end up using funds to specifically hit this, this Bear Tavern expansion that we've been talking about today. So just want to give that perspective of, of not only looking at the township and balancing out to look at also what the boroughs are up to.
I know it's tempting. I'm sorry. It's my job. Okay, we are going to close out the public comment section. Just joking. All right, we are going to, I'm needed first and second to move the consent agenda item.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Consent, consent passes. Sir, do you need to say more?
Yeah, so in the interest of talking about how our finance facilities committee meeting went this, this past month, I think we mentioned about 99.9% of everything we discussed. It continues to be a top priority. We'll continue to talk a lot about it. Happy to answer any questions from the rest of the board. All right.
Anyone, anyone?
We have one.
We have one thing that we have to do.
Okay.
Right? What is it? Is it accepted the donation, right?
Yes.
We have to do a motion to pass an acceptance of a great donation that's on the agenda here for an outdoor learning pavilion. So can I have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining from the, accepting the donation? Donation accepted.
Great.
Just explain what it was.
Oh, okay, so the donation was two, two, one from a, a local family, one from an anonymous donor, to be used to support actually the building of an outdoor learning pavilion at Hopewell Elementary School. So both of those donations were much appreciated, and then there was also an anonymous donation of about $2,000 to be used for lunch account that, that's owed by families in the community. Somebody donated, which is fantastic. So thank you very much to all of those who donated.
Just so you know, we, we did survey the principals and, and we're seeking out families in need, and not just applying it to general accounts, but looking for families in need.
It's fantastic.
Whoever did that, thank you. Okay, moving on to personnel.
Coast to shore.
Okay. Hello again. So this one will be, I think, a quick one. We did not meet this month, but we did, which is very typical for this time of year, just given the, the new committee actions and what's taken. If you take a look on what's on roll call, we are accepting some retirements, and we always appreciate that. Ms. Miller, and as, as well as Ms. Benavides, Benavides, thank you, thank you for that, as well as Ms. Nelson, which is great. So we really, really appreciate all three of them. And I'm missing one more. I'm so sorry. Yeah, Mr. Cobb, thank you. I'm not doing good on this time. My apologies. Mr. Cobb as well. So we always appreciate that and really, really value the time that these teachers bring to the, to the district, and we wish them well in their, in their retirement. We also have typical extracurricular appointments as well that we have on there. Any questions? Okay. We're going to have a motion here to be able to do this forward. Do we give a motion?
Motion.
Great.
Second.
Fantastic.
Roll call.
Dr. Genovese.
Yes.
And Mr. Capadia. He's not there. Dr. Lilliston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Slotman.
Dr. Stiliano.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Moving on to edcom.
All right, so I'm going to apologize to all of you, but I, this will not be as quick as Mark's. We did manage to get an edcom meeting in. It was a short, but a very productive one. So I have a couple of things to talk about. Thankfully, they're all good news. So we had a review of the TMS math enrollment. Was it true? Because he really cared about it. So just to provide a little bit of context, we went through a process of review for how students are placed in the various math tracks for regular needs math. So this doesn't impact the special needs kids. And we really wanted to make sure that the majority of the kids were on a track in middle school that would still leave them the option of taking AP Calculus, should they want to do that at, at the high school. That was not the case previously. We've made some changes as far as what the requirements were to places essentially into Algebra A in seventh grade. We've also made some changes and made explicit what the waiver process is for parents to be able to waive their kids in, and we reviewed the numbers. And basically, we seem to have gotten to the point that we were looking at the, the majority of the kids between Algebra A, Algebra seven, and Math seven are in Algebra A, which is that middle track that kind of gets them to AP Calculus senior year, if they want to get to. So there's no requirement, but they have that option. In fact, I think the majority, I, I think more than half are in that track. So good news, the changes that we made had the desired impact. We talked a little bit about the grades and whether we're seeing a lot of kids doing poorly as a result of this, and that's not the case. There's a little bit of a grade differential, but it's within what needs to be expected. So this seems to have gone well. We're going to be monitoring this. Next, we talked about the, the extent to which agriculture is introduced throughout the curriculum, from elementary schools through high school, so exposure and education about agriculture. And the context for that is dual. This kind of came about from two things that we want to do. One is expose kids to alternat, to careers that are alternative to kind of a traditional, I'm going to go to college track, especially given the number of farms that are present in the district. At the same time, we were looking for a way to get our kids more involved into what's going on in the community. And again, it's a, it's a great way to get them out into the community. Dr. Polizzi has provided us a very good list of everything that is already being done. So we are kind of in a good place already. In fact, I asked her to share that and go through it in this meeting, but given that we're at, like, past 10:00 PM, I'm going to revise that, and I'm going to say, would you mind emailing that to the whole board? They're, they're looking at proposals to, on how we can work with local farms to have people who farm in the community come in and talk to our kids about it. Also, then going beyond that and kind of getting the kids out to the farms, that's a little bit more difficult logistically. There is costs involved. There is costs involved. There are some farmers who are just not comfortable with having kids on their working farming facilities. So that second one, we're going to look into a little bit. a little bit more. We reviewed a book list for a Hope Squad program, which is really a program that helps kids deal with emotional issues. Good book list, no issues there, and about half of those books were already have in the district, so very minimal impact in terms of what we have to do there. We looked at the updated course of study for 25-26 school year, that's pretty routine, there's no real huge differences between the current school year and the one that's upcoming. We discussed, I think every committee discusses issues that have to do with what's coming in the budget. We looked at the tentative agendas for our meetings for the rest of the year, no changes were made. Smart best will be discussed in the upcoming February committee meeting. And then last but not least, we had participated in an ETS study, and I'm gonna let Dr. Polizzi add the details of what the study is about, but the result of that study is, it was, the paper that was published summarizing the results was highlighted by Edutopia as one of the 10 most impactful studies of 2024. So it was a very positive thing that the district was able to participate in, and I'll hand over to you, we don't have anything that we have to act on.
So just very briefly, we collaborated with ETS a few years ago, and they had run a study looking at grades, I believe it was three, five, and nine, and they'd given students math problems, and they were trying to see the motivation that students went through as they entailed harder problems. And so if you Google Edutopia's 10 most significant studies in education for 2024, it is the first study, and it's called A Simple Tactic for Warm Defender, so I highly recommend checking it out.
Building problem solvers. Yep. Any questions from the board? All right, seeing none, we will move on to community relations. There's-
Looking forward to meeting.
Yes. Okay, moving on to SEL.
We did have a very short meeting where we briefly talked about Hope Squad, which is up and running in all four of our elementary schools. It is a suicide prevention program that is peer-to-peer, and in the elementary schools, it's really about supporting emotional well-being. So that is fantastic, that it is up and running in our elementary schools. Our board member, Dr. Wilson, also shared his goal and priority of assessing our SEL programming throughout the district, so we're working on an effective way to collect data to determine if our SEL program is effectively reaching the goals that we have set. And then just, you know, our Rutgers clinicians, our air dogs, and all of the different mental health supports that we have in the district continue to support our families and staff, and will continue to do so. And so that was SEL.
Awesome. Any questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you. Moving on to policy. Oh, sorry, my bad. Anything from climate action?
My committee of one, I did not meet with myself. Or the teachers, actually, that headed up. I'm really not a committee of one there, teachers, that's support, but we did not meet this month.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to policy, Dr. Lilliston.
Okay, so the policy committee met on January 22nd. We welcomed our newest committee member, Dr. Stileanu, so welcome, glad to have her on board. Dr. Treese gave a review of the policy review process, and then we reviewed Policy 5701, Academic Integrity, Policy 5710, Student Grievance, and then we spent a little bit of time discussing the district's policies around communication with the community. So I'll just start briefly with the latter, which is the communication policy. So what we shared is that the board doesn't currently have a policy around the administration's communication with the public or the school community. When an incident occurs that may affect the school community, the district has cleared with our attorney that we can communicate with the community that we're aware of it and can't speak about details and provide resources. We did discuss the benefits and drawbacks of putting such a policy in place, but ultimately, the committee felt that each situation is nuanced, and that a policy would really constrain the ability of the administration to communicate depending on the unique nature of each situation. We'll be bringing Policy 5701, Academic Integrity, next month, so I'm not gonna spend much time on that, other than to say that our district is working hard on an AI policy, and that will accompany the review of 5701 as well. So we have one policy up for first reading today, so can I have a motion and a second to bring Policy 5710, Student Grievance, up for first reading?
Motion. Second.
Okay, great. So really briefly, this policy lays out the process by which a student or a parent can file a grievance with the school district. It's been revised to provide more detail regarding the student grievance process, and in particular, the revised policy requires written documentation supporting the grievance, provides the timelines within which a grievance must be filed, and also provides timelines within which district officials must respond to that grievance. So this policy would replace P5710, Pupil Grievance, which was last reviewed by the board in 2009. So hopefully everyone's had a chance to review that policy. I'll just say that in addition to the language that's suggested in bold here, the committee is recommending a couple additional updates. So the first thing is the recommended timeline for filing a grievance under Level 1 and Level 2, so to the teacher and then the principal, was five days. We want to extend that grievance period to 10 days, just to allow for more time for a parent or students to identify and navigate this process. The second thing that we clarified here is that a grievance should be submitted in writing at the first level, which is a grievance to teaching staff, and we also did indicate that a building administrator can provide assistance in this process, which we think might be important for families whose first language is not English in particular. So I'll just stop there and see if anybody has any questions or concerns about this policy.
So not this policy, but the previous one you mentioned, starting to develop a policy on AI?
Yes.
And I'm sure you're already gonna do this, but I want to say it out loud, AI is a great tool, especially for our students with special needs, and so taking that in consideration when we develop a policy, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Genovacy. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to calendars. So I need a first and a second to put forward January, February calendars. Calendars.
All right, personnel, we'll start with the easy one, February 24th, that's 6 o'clock.
How does that sound? Great, let's lock it in.
Finance, I was thinking the 10th, I'm not sure what time works for you guys anymore. You had morning last time, evening's better.
Like 10th of February?
February 10th, I was looking at, yes.
Let's see. I'm honestly, I'm okay, whatever.
Any opposition to a morning that day? Let's do it.
Virtual.
Yeah, virtual morning?
Yeah.
You guys wanna do 9:00 AM?
Works for me.
How about 8:00 AM?
How about 8:30?
How about 8:30?
Okay.
So 8:30?
All right.
Sounds great. Is that okay? Dr. Lilliston, is that okay with you?
Works for me.
Madam President, is that okay with you?
Okay, edcom.
Hold on, 19th at 5 for edcom? Okay. As long as, can somebody check the negotiations calendar?
You're good. Negotiation, we don't have one scheduled.
Are we good on that?
Yeah.
Okay, then we're good.
All right, which one, do you stack something with edcom? Something stacked with edcom, or is it stacked with SEL? Poll at SEL?
12 at 8:30. 8:30. 12 at 8:30.
Okay. And then community relations.
Okay, so what do we think about community relations on the 13th? Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Which would you prefer? I could do the morning at 8, or I could do after, any time after a lunch.
8 o'clock. And then last but not least, policy. The meeting is the 24th, just to kind of play around that.
Just the 13th, of course?
Look at Vicky's already on the camera.
Or the 12th? Looking at afternoon, evening? 12:00? 13th at 5? And Dr. Treese, does that work for you?
13th at 5 for policy, yes.
That works, okay.
Government relations.
What about the... About the 18th?
4 is unfortunate.
4.
18, 3:30?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Trying not to be cheeky with those. Okay. Any new business items? No.
I wouldn't dare right now.
No. There'd be a lot of kicking under the table. All right, we're going to go ahead and move into our second public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this point of this meeting, during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond to you or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take up the matter at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open.
I'm back, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry for all of you. I just want to finish. Erin Groger, 26, Dublin Road, Pennington. So I just want to say, I feel a little hope. I do. I feel a little hope that the board is seeing the inequities that we feel, that our kids feel. I do, I feel some hope. Please, don't let us lose that hope, because we're standing here today and we want to work together, we do, trust me. I, I'm here, I'm ready to, I'll be at that board meeting and you'll hear me complaining there about the money for the pilot program. I'll do it. But please, don't forget about Bear Tavern kids. That's why I say on script, I didn't want to get upset about my kids, but we're passionate, we want the best for them. And so I just want to kind of close with referendum, no referendum. The class sizes are increasing. So, we need to figure out what we're doing, and I have the hope, and we're saying we're gonna do something this summer. What are we doing? What are we doing this summer to alleviate the class sizes here at Bear Tavern? For me, I'm not in all of this, like you are, but to me, it made sense to look at a shop rate, the development behind shop rate, and that entire development go to Stony Brook. I see that alleviating bus issues going to multiple places. I would love to know why that doesn't work, I'm here asking, because to me, we've added three bus routes to Bear Tavern. Couldn't those three bus routes have gone to one development and then taken students to Stony Brook where they don't feel the class sizes we have? That's my question. Because if we're gonna redistrict the whole district, it seems like a lot of work when there are high populations of students coming in specific areas that I feel, I feel like it's a solution, clearly I don't know everything, but that's what I'm asking about here right now. And when will the plan be communicated to us? So we're gonna make these changes, when will we know? Because this is going to impact our kids, and it's impacting our kids right now. Just to go back to teachers really quickly, yellow thing, I got it. When a new student comes, the amount of assessments a teacher has to do on that new student is unbelievable, so everything has to stop in the room for a new student coming in, and I get it, we can't stop them, but it's just here. So I leave you with that, I have hope, I appreciate you, I do, I appreciate being here tonight, I really do thank you, and I really want to partner with you for the best for our kids here at Bear Tavern. Thank you.
I'm back here again, too. Mike Kelly, I am at 233 Pleasant Valley Road, Titusville. So yeah, I was listening to all your presentation tonight, and it seems like our schools are falling apart, our class sizes are getting bigger, and all of our kids have lice. And I was thinking, well, you know, you know, I told you before that class sizes are pretty important to me, to all of us around here. Maybe it'd be a good idea if you guys would make public what the class sizes are. I mean, you don't have to list who the students are, but let us know, we could have the data. Okay, is it like all the class sizes, or are they just like statistics about the class sizes? Yeah, I'm pretty ignorant, but I was gonna say, so something that we can control, though, is this lice thing. This is kind of insane, I didn't know about this. I would like to know, who really makes the call there? Is it the superintendent? Do you have to listen to some other person's recommendation? These class sizes are getting bigger, that's more density of people, maybe these studies that they're citing are for like teeny-tiny classes, where it's just like, oh sure, you don't have to worry about lice if there are one kid in a class or something like that, or two kids in a class. But you get like 30 kids in a little room, and like, maybe we should like, think? Well, maybe these studies don't apply to the situation where we have these massive class sizes in these little teeny-tiny rooms, and everyone has lice, so if it's your choice, then maybe take that into consideration? Thank you. Thank you.
In your response to public comment, there are a few things I feel compelled to state. To sit here this evening and say that you, as an individual board member, cannot respond to emails is untrue. Earlier this month, you all participated in ethics training, where you were all told that you would not be violating any policies or potentially being censured if you replied to an email with, "Thanks for your email, I'll be sure to pass it along to the appropriate party." I can personally say that I sent an email in November and heard crickets. I was, I resent it again at the beginning of this month, and still, nothing from any of you. It would go a long way with the public to acknowledge them. The smart pass, as a parent of a CHS student, I read and hear a lot about the numerous concerns. Kids are standing in doorways waiting for their turn to go so they can run to the bathroom and return in an allotted time. Students need to go to the media center to print for an assignment, but can't create a new pass to go to the bathroom for another 40 minutes without a staff member overriding the request, disrupting the continuity of the class. I often hear that we're trying to teach our students to have a healthy balance of technology, and this directs them right back to the Chromebook, to go to the bathroom, to the nurse, to the media center, or to another teacher for assistance during recitation. I'm also curious to know what we're paying as a district to utilize this program. Lastly, I often speak to you, the board, but I'd like to thank the public for coming out tonight to share their concerns and their voices. Seeing a full house here this evening, at 1.50 to 60 people, to honor our district staff, as well as convey concerns, confirm that I'm not the only one with concerns, though some of you may think that, and others are starting to speak up. Something I heard repeatedly is something that I have stated over and over. Communication between this district, the board, and the community is vital for a successful homeschool partnership. We are in a trying time, and the future is uncertain. It is imperative that all components of this community agree to be open, transparent, and respectful.
Hello, Cheryl Serenkowski, 9 Hunters Ridge Drive, Hopewell Township. I just wanted to follow up on some of my previous questions. So, are any of the goals of the referendum to address class size, or is it mostly just infrastructure type work that we're taking on? The, kind of in regards to my previous question, so I understand that there's 10 new classrooms in the addition, and if we're moving the six from the trailers into there, that's an increase of four classrooms. And I just want to ask if that's actually enough classrooms to make a difference, particularly in Bear Tavern as we look at these new schools. Perhaps we should be looking for more than four classrooms, net, because who knows? If we're going to ask for it, we might as well ask for what we actually need. And then just as a, I guess, a comment, frequently I see information, kind of like out there on the internet, referencing the 60607 district enrollment, and how people say that it's so much more than we have now, and that we should be able to make it work, because we can make it work then. And I understand that there's a lot of numbers that go into there. We talked about a lot of the special services that are probably now offered that weren't then, and I think that to kind of, I guess, thwart that, for this next referendum, that some of those things should be more clear. We should talk about what the class sizes were then, what they are now. I could only go back to 2012 in the meetings, where the class sizes were significantly less, but I think that that, like, those hard numbers would be really helpful for the people who keep saying, "But 0607, you know, 500 more, it worked then, why can't the, the district make it work now?" So I think that the more transparency we can offer people, the better it'll be, and I really appreciate the slides that you presented earlier, that really laid out each of those, and I know, Amanda, had mentioned, about listing all those things, and that going a long way with the township, and I guess, for the whole district. And I, I fully believe that, because I think that that, in my opinion, was one of the problems with the last referendum, is that people didn't have that granularity, and it was very high level to say, it was this school or that school that needed some enhancements. And that makes it really hard for people to trust your word, that we really need things. And I appreciate that you took the turf out. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Dave Stradic, 23 Deverdy Road, Pennington. Just a couple of quick clarifications. Dr. Therese talked about lice a little bit there, and she shared guidelines. They're all guidelines. None of them are requirements. That's why many districts make common sense decisions for kids. And I also say that the CDC recommended children wear cloth masks in kindergarten for six and a half hours during the school day. They're being investigated for that. There's current senate committees on that, about how they failed the American public. They've eroded trust. Many of these organizations have made recommendations that are completely wrong. And what we have to do as professionals is look through that and think, does this make sense? And what I didn't hear from Dr. Therese was one logical reason why children with lice crawling through their hair should remain in a classroom. Did anyone else? I didn't. So with that said, I'm going to finish this, and I just do want to briefly talk about Board of Ed communication, because I didn't even get an acknowledgement from the board president for either of the emails that I sent. And my board does respond with the public, and they just put a disclaimer to say, "I'm acting in my capacity as a private citizen, not as a board member, not representing the board," and they communicate. They are on social media doing it, they've been doing it for many, many years, and there's no issues. So that is something that you can do if you choose to. What I would say is, an acknowledgement is something that I think is fair. I write a long email, you don't even say, "Thank you for your email, appreciate the..." Nothing. And that, to me, shows you don't care about what I have to say. Now, I'm going to finish this up. "As a school district, it is imperative that we apply common sense and sound reasoning, and not blindly follow guidance from organizations that do not fully understand the challenges in elementary schools. The current lice policy is putting students, families, and staff members at unnecessary risk." And Dr. Therese mentioned knit, the no-nit policy. I'm talking about live lice. I'm not even talking about nits. I can live with the nits. I don't love it, but I can live with it. I'm talking about live lice. "The current policy is putting students, families, and staff members at unnecessary risk. In my experience, other districts, including my own, make the logical decision to send students with live lice home to prevent further spread, and also make sure that child with lice feeding on their scalp is cared for and the lice is eradicated." Seems logical, right? "New York City public schools follow similar protocol, as do countless others, because it is a responsible thing to do that shows you value of the safety and well-being of all students, families, and staff. Allowing children with live lice to remain in the classroom is frankly neglectful. Any parent who receives a call from the school nurse informing them that her child has lice, and then chooses to send them back to the classroom, is acting irresponsibly." Yet Hopewell's policy prioritizes these negligent parents over the safety and well-being of all other families, children, and staff. I find this unacceptable, and I challenge any of you on the board to say in good conscience, you would want your child sitting next to a child with live lice on a bus or in a classroom. Now I have some questions. I'm going to skip the first one, because we talked about communication. Would you feel comfortable with your child sitting next to a classmate with live lice? Are you comfortable with the fact that Hopewell families do not even receive notification of live lice? And I know Dr. Therese mentioned that we've received, we don't receive any notification. Any notification. Are you comfortable with that? I'm almost done here. I have one more thing. If there was not guidance for you all to blindly follow, let's just say you had to use common sense, would you advocate to keep children with live lice crawling?
Okay, so, please, thank you.
All right, so I'll be the last one, then. I'm John Groger, 26 Dublin Road, in our lovely town. So, I just wanted to just repeat once more, and I appreciate that there was some comment from the board, saying that there was going to be, at least hopefully, look into this further, into the lice issue. My biggest concern has already been echoed multiple times, although it's, you know, best practices, it sounds like, through the CDC. I think at some point that there needs to be more of a further discussion, as already been kind of talked about, because ultimately, what's happening is it's taking more time away from our administrators, from our teachers, out of their day to try to handle these situations, because it is constant. Unfortunately, it continues to be multiple times all throughout, multiple times all throughout the day. You know, we're hearing about it secondary. Unfortunately, because of how often it is, we're not hearing it from the teachers, because again, we're taking further time away from other things that are happening, but ultimately, we just want to make sure that this is something that's being addressed further. And I guess that my question is, at what point does it become a situation where there will be further that's looked into? Because ultimately, where we stand just can't stay status quo. Thank you.
I didn't use my full three minutes, can I just ask his last question?
No.
No. All right, well, check your hedge for lice when you go home.
Can come up and read off the paper, that's fine, but just to be fair, we didn't have to give everybody three minutes.
Yeah, and we've cut, we've cut people.
Somebody else hasn't spoken yet.
I can't, I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing.
Somebody else can read the question, but you've already used your three minutes for this section. Or you're, you've, no, you've already used your time for this.
So, basically, I went, it's like...
Correct.
Melissa Chimbangu, 2 State Park Drive. My sister left the room, but these are actually her questions, she was too nervous to come up. There are three kindergarten classrooms at Bear Tavern, one of which is an inclusive classroom. My niece Quinn is in a classroom with 24 children. And to be very clear about statistics, no more than two children are leaving at any given time. So that means that kindergarten teacher has 22 to 24 children. You previously indicated, I think when there was discussions about the paras at the end of last year, or sometime during last year, that the paras would return to the classrooms when the classes hit a certain size. I'd be curious to know, what's that number? Have we hit it? What's going on there? To correct the record, another thing having to do with kindergarten, is the para that is in my niece's kindergarten classroom is not there full-time. She's there for a large part of the day, but she's definitely not there full-time. So, yes, we have the paras, but they're not there in their full capacity, as has been the case in past years. So I just want to make sure that that is very clear. And, sort of as a tangent to that, I think it's really unrealistic to have a kindergarten teacher expected to instruct 24, 25 children with varying abilities, varying preschool experiences. Some kids come in with no preschool, some have gone to excellent preschools, to teach them all how to read in their kindergarten year, which is what the expectation is. Thank you. Another fact, my nephew, who is in Ms. Finnegan's class, which is an all-inclusive, which is an inclusive class, excuse me, Ms. Finnegan, who is here tonight, which I think deserves a lot of credit for these teachers, her and Ms. Machado and others, who are here until very late in the evening, that shows what these teachers are made of here at Bear Tavern. His inclusive class has 25 children. Of those, again, a fact for the record, at any given time, at most, five of those children are leaving the classroom to be pulled out for instruction. Again, 25 children, five are being pulled out. That classroom is never dipping down to 15. It's just not happening. So I don't know where those facts are coming from, but if we're going to be honest with you guys, we need you guys to be honest with us. And we can't just be aggregating data that on average, in some special classroom, in Hopewell, 10 children being pulled out at once. It's just not happening here. There are complaints from other schools, and this hasn't been addressed yet, about inequities across elementary schools related to programs like field trips and other extracurriculars, some of which are being funded by the PTO. If other schools are going to complain that maybe Bear Tavern is doing the Terrapin program, or doing whatever thing it is that they're choosing to complain, whatever our field trips may be, then, you know, we should also be heard about the fact that these class sizes are clearly inequitable. Safety, I just wanted to touch quickly on Cheryl's comment. It is very unsafe when we're having big school programs here, Halloween, end of year, whatever it might be. So I do implore you guys to look into more parking here as part of the expansion. And just an idea, maybe there's a need for Bear Tavern and Tollgate families to speak at the board meetings occurring at other schools, right? Maybe people at other schools are insulated from what we are dealing with here. I don't know who, who wants to take that baton, but I think maybe that's an idea that should be considered. Thank you.
Okay, Caitlin Stradic, back for round two, 23 Deverdy Road. I'm just going to wrap up my husband's questions here with regard to the lice. "Are you comfortable with the idea of exposing Hopewell staff to the risk of lice by allowing children with active infestations to remain in the classroom? These staff members frequently work one-on-one with students or in small groups." Question four, "If there was not guidance for all of you to blindly follow, let's just say you had to use common sense and professional judgment, would you advocate to keep children with live lice crawling around on their head in our schools, knowing that challenges we face in elementary schools and buses with regard to physical space? And especially considering the ever-rising class size as a Bear Tavern? If so, please explain." It's time for this board to listen to the community it serves. I urge you to reconsider the current policy, prioritize the safety and well-being of all of our students, families, and our incredible Hopewell educators and staff. Thank you.
I've already addressed the class size. I appreciate you coming up and still saying that. Again, class size is going to go up everywhere. I know some of you said, "Class, inclusion class of 24, an inclusion class of 24 has two teachers in it, a para, sometimes multiple paras that are students." Yes, there are going to be classes that are going to hit 25 that don't have that. I'm not going to tell you that that's not true. But that is not the norm in the district right now. It is going to become the norm, because we can't afford this anymore. We don't have enough money to pay our bills. I hear what you're saying. This is the same for everywhere, West Windsor, Plainsboro is doing this, Princeton, Robbinsville. School districts that are ranked higher than us, class sizes are already above ours. Already academically ranked higher than us. So yes, class size, smaller class size is optimal, but you can do it with larger class sizes. We're going to have to, because we can't do this anymore. We can't afford to do it anymore. Everyone's going to feel it, though, because it shouldn't just be Bear Tavern. Someone suggested going to other schools, going to their meetings and talking? That's important, because I think that everyone needs to hear what you all are going through. I am concerned about the separate question, because I don't want you all hanging out here. Somebody asked, "Should we go for more than 10 classes?" The building addition that we're proposing for the, for Bear Tavern will have the ability to build upper level. But with all the other things that we have on that list, I can't put that on there to start, because we're already at, looking at $84 million. But yes, you will be shored up to add on if the state, we finally hit their, their view of what's too many students, and they give us money for that. There is enrollment waivers, we just haven't qualified for it yet, because they think we can have 24 and 25 and 26 in a classroom. Hopefully, they will give us some money for that at some point, if we grow fast enough, and then we can go ahead and build on that second floor at Bear Tavern. We will look at the parking a lot, I don't know where we would, room we could find, but we can have the architect look at that and do some problem solving with where we could put a parking lot, if that's something that we can include in this build. As far as trip equity, that is something that I'm always grappling with, with the District Parent Council, which is representations from all the PTOs. Some PTOs are like, like corporations, they can raise a lot of money for trips. Others struggle to raise money for trips. We're trying to shoot for equity, we're trying to get them to do something that, everyone kind of does the same trips, because it's not fair that, you know, Hopewell Elementary can raise a lot of money, but Stony Brook can't, right? And that's, and that's a difficult thing. So we're always, Dr. Flixers and I are always working on trying to make sure we have consistent grade-level trips for everyone. But with the way budget's going, it's going to be something that we're probably going to be trying to throttle back on, because it's just, even when y'all raise money, the bus, the extra bus costs always fall on the district, and we just can't really afford it anymore. I think I got everything. And the lice, again, I've already addressed that, and the board, I'm sure, will be asking me more questions about it, but for right now, we are following the recommendations. We do not have an overrun of lice going on in the schools. Some of you are saying you're hearing it secondhand, because your kids aren't coming home with lice. But all schools face lice challenges. Well, I'm not, I'm sorry, Mr. Billy's here, I don't think we're having, I'm going to do one better than that. Ms. Donardo, you are the one who supervises all the nurses in all the schools. I, I don't think, I don't think we're facing lice at some astronomical numbers, it's just a, you know, the nuisance.
No, but, but I, I am going to look into and talk with the nurses, I hear you, but you are the first to complain, and in 10 years I've been doing this. But I, I hear you, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into this.
I'm sorry, I don't think, I don't think that's true, that we don't care. If someone is struggling paying for and financing, you know, getting rid of or mediating lice, this district has always stepped up and took, taken care of and paid for and getting those supplies. We can get, we can get those supplies if you're not able to get them. Please let us know that. We, I know it's frustrating, but...
So, the last thing I will say, before we wrap up, is that this is a dialogue, but it is also not an exchange of information. It's not the way that we can handle public comment. So, I know you're frustrated, and I will not shout from here to you, I don't expect that to happen here, either, because we can't each respond to you. So I'll get your frustration, it sounds like Paulette will be responding to, or collecting more information, and the board will expect additional conversation in committee and with the administration. You are heard, and I, I guarantee you, there are emails that... And, I guarantee you, there are emails that I don't respond to. We try to not all respond to everything, because it's a lot. But, if it would make people feel better, I will certainly say acknowledging your email when I know Dr. Therese is responding. We try not to fill people's messages up with additional messages that are just acknowledgement. But if that makes people feel heard, we can absolutely do that. But we will not expect the entire board to reply. That's not, in my opinion, efficient or helpful. So, I can commit to you that you will receive an acknowledgement, but Dr. Therese and I work together to determine who's going to respond. So, I'll leave that where it is. We'll wrap up public comment, and I need a first and a second to move into executive session. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you all for coming, we appreciate it, and we hope to see you at the next school's PTO, I mean, PTO meeting, board meeting.